Rita, do you want to start with county?
Sure.
I think we do. What, do you want to do NERDA first? I think, oh, because, sorry, we're going to start with NERDA first. So, I have to call the, call to order the NERDA Advisory Board for July 25th, 2018. Is there any public comments that's not on the agenda? Okay, approval of minutes from the April 11th, 2018 meetings. Motion? So moved.
Did you just ask for comments that aren't on the agenda?
For the NERDA, not for the Select Board. I asked them to, I'll try to talk louder. I asked them to raise the volume. Oh, now they raised it too much. Is that better? Is that better? Hello?
Yes.
Bueller? So is there a, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of revenue anticipation notes. Is there any questions or comments? Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business?
No.
Anything else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to county.
All right, I'd like to call the July 25th, 2018 County Commissioners to order.
You're released.
Are there any announcements? No. Um, any public comment? Any new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes and warrants. We'll take them together unless there's...
Make a motion to approve minutes, payroll and treasury warrants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any commissioners' reports or comments?
Nope.
None?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, moving along fast. If your whole meeting goes like this. Okay, I'd like to call to order the July 25th Select Board Meeting, 2018. We have a couple changes to the agenda. The Select Board comments, we're going to, sorry, the Committee Reports, number six, on the Select Board Reports, we're going to move up to the very end as we normally do. And then we'll wait one second, Matt's going to help.
I'm listening.
Okay, man?
Okay.
Um, is there any public comment here that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay?
My name is Tom Montgomery, 33, North Liberty Street, and I'd like to bring up a situation that happened to me on the Pulpus Road on Monday morning. Uh, I'm a retired carpenter, but I work up at Great Point as a ranger, and I'm the first man on the beach from 6:00 to 2:00. And occasionally I have to gas up my truck before I go to work. And I'd gone into town, was back down in the Pulpus Road, and I came upon up behind a cyclist who was in the road, and I determined it was okay to go around him, and as I went around him, another truck was coming up back the other way at me. And so I put on the brakes quickly, got behind the guy, but there was almost an accident. I could have killed this guy. I could have been killed. And so, with what's just happened out at Hoigs Hollow, and the fact that this guy was in the road, and there was a bicycle pound right there, I know there's a lot of problems here, and I've been to the police department today to talk about it with management, and I'm aware of the fact that we've got a lot of these guys that are riding fast on the road, and they're afraid to ride on the bike path because of mothers with dogs and baby carriages and joggers and other people who are going slower. But it's very frustrating as I drive around, and I'm going to come down here and talk about this for a long time, because these guys are on the road back and forth all over the place. And I know that you people have a tough time, and the police do, and the traffic advisory boards can't come up with an answer to this, but I feel that nothing's really being done. And so, at the expense of, you know, coming down here and talking a little bit more about it, I would volunteer to be on any committee that could sit down, if it's the traffic advisory board, any outfit that the police department has, and volunteer my time to try and come up with some solutions to this. I'll tell you a quick one that I've got. It may seem funny to you, but if there's anybody that's a pilot here, they'll know what I'm talking about. On any aviation map, there's what's called an oil burner route. It's 40,000 feet in the air, and it's what the military jets fly. That way, there are no commercial airliners going 600 miles an hour, when these guys are going 1,200 or 1,500, however fast they go. Why don't we build an oil burner route for these guys in the cycles that want to go fast, and it keeps them out of the way of the general public that's using the bike paths? And then they can go like hell all over the place wherever they want. Sometimes I'll go by a group of guys who are really good bicycle cyclists. They're professional guys. They drive, they ride $4,000 bikes, they shave their legs, they've got their fancy helmets and everything else. I mean, it's unbelievable. And there's 10 of them in a row. Sometimes they're taking up the whole your side of the road. It's happened to me going to work very early. I have to go at 5:00 to be there at 6:00. Sun is in my face, and I've had to go around them. And when I did, I rolled my window down and I yelled at them, "Get on the bike path." So, one of them who I know really well, which I didn't know that he was one of them, called me up and said, "You know, you're right. We should be in single file, and these guys are all in the middle of the road, but it's too dangerous to ride on there because we used to ride on the bike path, and a guy came out, and the first guy slammed into the car, and the next three or four guys slammed into him, and we had a big pileup." So I understand the problems. But, you know, something's going to happen, because if it's just happened to me, and I've been talking to the management of the police department today, he says, "You wouldn't believe how many reports we get of this all the time." And so, I'm just asking that somebody do something about it, direct me, and I'll volunteer my time to see what I can do about it.
If I can make one suggestion, I'm on the chair, I'm the chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So our next meeting is going to be talking about bike, bike path safety. So if you can give your email to Erica or write it down and give it to Libby.
Erica knows me.
Okay. So I can get in touch with you and survive you, and it could be a good conversation.
Absolutely.
And I'm one of those guys with the shaved legs.
Okay.
So I'm there.
Thanks. Thank you all for taking the...
And you're admitting it on the camera. Oh.
It makes us feel better.
The visual there is just...
So is there any other public comment that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay.
Did we skip announcements?
We did. So I totally skipped announcements, sorry about that, Libby.
The shaved legs wasn't announced, but all right.
Okay, then. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a special proclamation in honor of Mariah Mitchell's 200th birthday, and the Director of Astronomy of the Mariah Mitchell Association, Regina Jorgensen, Dr. Jorgensen, is going to read the proclamation. Here you are, and then she's going to give it back, and you all will sign it. And if you haven't noticed, she has provided some pins, and I believe these are available at Visitor Services as well. Thank you, Janet. It's a big deal.
Yes, this is a very big deal, 200th birthday of Mariah, who was born here on Nantucket, as I'm sure many of you know. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and I guess I'll proceed with reading. So whereas Mariah Mitchell, America's first woman astronomer, was born on Nantucket in August 1st, 1818, and raised on the island, and was a fellow community member and one of the island's most illustrious daughters, and whereas her discovery of a telescopic comet from the roof of the Pacific Bank in 1847 helped launch her onto the world stage, and whereas she utilized this fame to help further her work for the rights of women, and particularly the place of women in sciences and promoting women's education in the 19th century, and whereas the organization founded in her honor in 1902 continues to promote her legacy and to ensure the continued preservation of her birthplace, our island's unique ecosystems, and the life that inhabits it, and so now therefore be it resolved that on the Nantucket Select Board does hereby proclaim August 1st, 2018 as Mariah Mitchell Day on Nantucket in honor of her 200th birthday, and calls upon all citizens of Nantucket to acquaint themselves with this important person in our history and learn from her achievements and her work in order to be inspired to learn about the unique environment of the place we call home and support education and opportunities for all people of all ages.
Thank you. You can clap, it's fine. Ryan Mitchell was a trailblazer. Without Ryan Mitchell, I would not have met my wife. That's why I brought her to Nantucket. She worked for Ryan Mitchell.
Thank you very much. And there are a lot of activities going on this summer as in honor of this celebration. The only other announcement is that the next Select Board Meeting after tonight is Wednesday, August 8th. The Board is on its summer schedule, and we do have one new business item, Mr. Chair, which came in today. This is a, an opportunity for a grant application through the state. We were notified by the Governor's Office today or yesterday, I'm not even sure when, of a navigational dredging grant that fits the criteria for a project we are in the process of trying to get funding for, for Pulpus Harbor. So it fits our project. There are a limited number of communities that are eligible for this funding, but it does require a specific vote of the Board, and I guess you could potentially ratify it at your next meeting, and we could have it on the agenda, but the deadline is August 1st, and you won't be meeting between now and then. So if we could get your vote to support the grant application, it would be much appreciated.
Any question?
No.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve the grant proposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Onto approval of minutes, warrants and penny contracts. And motion to approve minutes of April 24th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval payroll warrants and treasury warrants for July 15th and July 18th.
So moved.
And 22nd, 25th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pending contracts. Libby, is there anything you wanted to review?
There are a couple of things I'd like to point out, just for the Board's interest. One of the contracts is with BCM Controls, $231,295. This relates to door access control system and some other infrastructure for the new fire station, and I just want the Board to recall that when we were bidding out this project, we took a number of items out of the bid, because if you recall, we bid it out more than once, and to get it within the appropriation, we took some items out. This item was one of the items taken out, and the items that were taken out were done with careful consideration as to their vendors being on the state bid list, which provides the town with something of a cost savings anyway. So this item does represent, it's a cost, but it is also a cost savings. The next item that I want to point out is a contract with Clifton Larson Allen, $48,500. This relates to our island home. If the Board will recall, a number of months ago, maybe closer to a year ago, the Board voted to request the town administration look into securing a vendor who could advise us as to what it would take to construct a new facility and/or renovate the current facility at the current site. That is what this contract will examine.
On that one, Libby?
Yes.
No, no, no look at staffing in this? It'll be all building?
Well, it will, it will, as is noted there, assess current operations and financial modeling in connection with both of those options, so I think staffing will be, it's not going to be overly detailed, but it will look at what the requirements are for both situations.
Okay.
So what would be the document that we'll be able to review that will come out of this engagement?
There will be a written report, and it will be presented to you at a meeting.
But will it make, is it assessment? Is it making recommendations, or is it...
It will, it will tell us what the potential costs are to do one of those options, both of those options, and what the logistics are for things such as do people, if we were going to renovate on site, what will happen with the residents?
Okay.
It will examine what the logistics of...
And this is a, this is an architectural firm?
This is actually, is Rachel here? Thank you, Rachel. It's an accounting firm, but they, well, Rachel can say who they are.
They mostly started as an accounting firm, but they do a lot with determination of need, applications for facilities, so with that, it involves a lot of the capital costs. So they have people on staff that are not actually architects, but they have expertise in the construction and modeling out financially for that, and they're fully prepared and knowledgeable and have a good working relationship with SMRT anyways, to also engage with them and utilize them as the architects.
I guess I have a question. If they see anything out of line, will they, they note that?
Yes. We actually already have them right now at our island home. They're looking into our MMQs, which is what we use to get our mass health reimbursement back. So they're already very kind of ingrained in our daily operations, so they're already picking out things that we could improve on the daily side, and then they'll also look on the high level, financial overall staffing levels and everything as well, to see if there's kind of things that we can adjust up or down.
Okay.
Just, you know, you may want to consider at some point, thinking about some kind of a reassessment of the architectural firm, because I know that they didn't really have a lot of experience. You might actually have, you know, be thinking about a design competition of some kind, because this would be quite a feather in someone's cap to approach this very complex...
Yeah, my understanding of this is, once we get this from them, we kind of choose a path, and then we would have to bid that out. So we would kind of start from where we started at ground zero before we engaged SMRT in the very beginning anyways.
But including looking at a range of architectural firms, not just SMRT?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
All right, thank you.
I just, I just want to remind people, building a building is the easy part. It's operating this that is going to be the difficult part without housing and the other issues that we have going on, and unless we get some of those costs in line, the building itself is sort of meaningless. You know, that's just my take, having looked at this for a long time. So I hope that we're willing to really dig into that aspect of it.
There was a more detailed proposal that went around to the work group.
All right, good.
Maybe we can pass on to the rest of the board.
Dave Prinze, I've been involved in this for a little while, and Rachel had invited me on a phone call with this particular vendor, and one of the big questions that we pushed hard on was this idea of, you know, how could they test and help us understand the sensitivities I think Matt's talking about? And, and, you know, they were refreshing in how their program will allow quite a bit of analysis and open discussion through the process, which is maybe something we could do better to help people understand. So I was very candidly, very impressed by what they offered.
That would be great. Thanks.
I can send the scope around again to the Board.
Thanks.
The only other contract I wanted to point out is the Novak Consulting Group, $56,000. This is for an operational review of the Plus Department. This is the same group that is doing the staffing study, and as a result, there was something of a cost savings.
I just have one question. The Commonwealth Resource Management Corp. for up to $200,000, is that a, is that an ongoing contract, or could you just talk a little bit about that? Is that a new program, or...
Thank you, yes. That is an ongoing contract. It's a three-year contract. We are going to, we have been utilizing the service of CRMC, which is George Aronson's firm, for some time now for solid waste management issues.
Okay, so it's just, all right.
So as we move forward with examining the landfills, future, and operations and all, this will...
Okay, thank you.
...for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? For approval? Motion?
So moved.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to Select Board Reports. We're going to start off with Town Council Overview of Open Meeting Law, Conflict of Interest Law, including recusal versus disclosure, and then Public Records. And Lauren Goldberg is going to take us through that.
As Lauren's coming up, I just wanted to remind the Board that last year, we started a new annual program of providing sort of refresher training, or in the case of new committee members, training for these items that are listed on the agenda, open meeting law, conflict of interest, and public records, because we were, there is a lot to all of these things that people on Boards, Committees, and Commissions need to be familiar with. So Lauren's came last year and this year to do, I think, three sessions, two this year for new people, and if anybody wants a refresher, they're more than welcome to attend. All the documents will be online, and this is just meant to be a quick overview, and if the Board wants to ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Lauren Goldberg from KP Law. What I thought I would do with respect to the open meeting law and public records laws, just give you a few quick updates on the law. As Libby indicated, all of the PowerPoint will be uploaded, and people have the ability to look at that in more detail. The first thing I wanted to inform you about is that the Attorney General has issued new or updated regulations with respect to the process for approval of minutes, and that includes, rather than just at a formal meeting such as this approving minutes, the two options that they've also indicated include authorizing a single person to approve the form of minutes, or doing it in a kind of a very consent calendar type of way, where it's just listed there, and unless you hear any objection, to go ahead and approve the minutes, somewhat like how you did it tonight, versus the more traditional way where people say, "I said this, and she said that, and could you make a change here and there?" So that exists as an option to facilitate timely production of minutes. Another thing I wanted to remind people on, of, based on my discussions with various members of Boards and Committees today, is what a quorum is. A quorum is a majority of the members of an entire Board, regardless of the number of members, then holding office. If it's a five-member Board, the quorum is always going to be three, even if there's only four appointees. So I just wanted to remind people of that. Another really useful resource on the open meeting law are the FAQs, the frequently asked questions, that the Attorney General has posted on their Division of Open Government website, and that's, it's very practical advice on questions that they're getting all the time. So if you have a question, and you can look there to see if there's a good answer already available. And then finally, a new executive director, or a new director of the Division of Open Government has been appointed. Her name is Carrie Brendan, and she has been Attorney General since, at the office since 2012 with public records and open meeting law, and she's been serving on the Open Meeting Law Advisory Committee, which is studying implementation of the open meeting law. That can lead to a little bit of a change in direction sometimes in some of the decisions that are issued, so it's just important to bear that in mind. And so if there aren't any other direct questions on the open meeting law, yes.
I said, what's the biggest mistake you commonly see through different municipalities that they overlook?
A very frequent misunderstanding is about the specificity of meeting notices. That meeting notices are supposed to be, so specificity, meeting notices, the statute says topics need to be listed, and oftentimes, or the AG interprets it as items. So the example that I like to give is false oil permits is a topic, and it looks like that would satisfy the open meeting law. The Attorney General's Office interprets it as the name of the applicant who wants the permit, the address at which they want the permit, and so that kind of specificity is required in the meeting notice, and also the same type of specificity in the minutes. Under the old open meeting law, which is kind of what everyone is used to, you just have a summary of a discussion, and that was good enough. Under the new open meeting law, you're supposed to have not a verbatim recitation, but he said this, she said that, you know, the response was this. So that's still hard for people to get used to after years and years of doing it a different way. So those are typically the biggest issues. Okay, thank you.
Have you reviewed our minutes for, or sampled our minutes to see if we are in compliance?
Yes.
And if not, what do you, what are your recommendations?
We have made recommendations in the past, so the Board's minutes are in good shape from what I respect.
Okay, good, for now. Okay, good, thank you.
It's a good thing for everybody to take a look, all Boards and Committees, and, you know, I know that you have a lot of minute takers throughout town whose job it is to prepare minutes, and that typically is a benefit, because they're able to be more focused on the minute taking than on participation in the meeting. So that's, that's a good thing to have. If resources allow, of course. I understand that that can be very difficult, but when it's available, it's a good service to take advantage. Okay. So under the public records law, which is still a relatively new law, there's been a significant adjustment that all Boards and Committees and town officials and employees have had to make with respect to the law. It used to be that there were 10 days to respond to a public records request, and it wasn't calendar days, it was just 10 days. There was no such thing as a records access officer, and the supervisor of public records was under no time limit in terms of their response. Since this new law has come into effect, the supervisor of public records has 10 days to respond to an appeal. And what that means is, where before they had time to call every municipal records custodian and have a conversation about why they thought withholding a record was an appropriate thing to do, now they really don't have time for that, and that's not their general practice anymore. So what that means is that the municipal employees who are responding to public records requests, including the records access officer, have to really focus on the timeframe for response and making sure that it's exceptionally detailed. The response is really the only opportunity to lay out the reason for withholding a record, if that's the intent, or for why it's going to take longer than 10 days to provide all of the responsive records. So one of the documents that will be uploaded is a list of the various elements that have to be in that response. It's very important to keep track of the dates for the response. If you wait more than 10 days to give a response, then no fee can be assessed in connection with that, with that response effort. And the bigger the project, the more likely it is the town wants to be able to be reimbursed for its expenses, so I can't recommend enough that those dates be calendared immediately upon receipt of the request, and that that response letter, if every, if all of the requested items aren't going to be provided within the 10 days, be very carefully put together to protect the town's interests. So that's number one. The other thing that, you know, is, is commonly the case with the supervisor's responses is that they will say, "The letter isn't specific enough, the letter of denial or partial denial isn't specific enough," and without that additional detail, they're going to order the town to provide the record, or the town can appeal, request reconsideration of the supervisor's decision. So that's also a very big change. What you and I would probably think of as sufficient specificity, the supervisor says, "That's probably not good enough," and that has been our experience in every town, in every city. So again, paying really close attention to that initial letter is very important, and then understanding that the order that's given is likely to either be, if it's not deemed to be sufficiently specific, to either disclose or request reconsideration. Again, they're not typically inclined to change their own opinion that they've already given, so really focusing on that response. Now, that brings up, you had asked about the open meeting law, what's the most common, you know, mistake? I think the biggest challenge is that for both public employees, so people that work for and are paid by the town, and also volunteers for the town, the public records law applies to every document made or received, every email. And so it's really important, if you're a volunteer, and, you know, I just wanted to emphasize, 10 business days, which is the time we have to respond to a public records request, may seem quick, I mean, it may seem like a long time, but it actually goes by very quickly, and for volunteers, if they're not using a town email address, then what we really recommend considering is creating a Gmail account or something that's a separate email address that only involves town business, limiting all of your correspondence to scheduling to the extent possible, and in addition, understanding that at some point, if a records request is made, that really we need you to look at your emails as soon as possible and provide any responsive records to the records access officer. Otherwise, you know, as I indicated, the supervisor is likely to issue an order, and bear in mind that if it doesn't go to the supervisor's office and it instead goes to Superior Court, that the law as it's written right now says that if any records are provided once an appeal has been filed, that there can be an order for payment of attorney's fees. So it's very important for everyone to bear in mind that the records they create are public records, to try and avoid use of email for anything other than scheduling if you're on a Board or Committee, and to be careful about how you maintain your records.
That's why we, we got Archive Social a couple years ago, it's all town social media accounts. Anything that we post or the public posts on it, it's archived with the metadata.
Yeah.
Just in case, if you get a public records request and it goes to social media, we can go find all that.
That's right. That's very important. Absolutely. Okay, so finally, we're going to discuss the Conflict of Interest Law a little bit. I'm not going to go through the whole PowerPoint, obviously, that's not what's intended for tonight, but I did just want to point out that there's several provisions about which all public employees and public volunteers should be aware. Chapter 268A is the Conflict of Interest Law, and Sections 17, 19, 20, and 23 are really the sections that most municipal employees are going, and that definition includes volunteers, part-time, full-time, everybody, are likely to face. So I'm going to talk about them kind of in reverse order. Section 23 establishes a code of conduct for all municipal employees, including volunteers, part-time, full-time. And that code of conduct, so we can just skip right forward, there's a little of this. That code of conduct establishes two basic provisions that need to be considered. One is the concept of not using your office to obtain for yourself or another a benefit, a $50 or more, that wouldn't be available to similarly situated individuals. And that concept is just, you can't use your office to benefit somebody in a way that's unfair or inappropriate. The other is section 23B3, and that's a section that provides that any municipal employee may not participate in a matter in which it appears that they have a conflict. And that kind of appearance, the way I like to describe it is that it looks like a person would be acting based on their own personal interests rather than on the, the interests of the town. And section 23B3 provides that for appointed officials and appointed employees, that they can disclose a, an interest that would otherwise look like a financial interest or look like they might not act appropriately by filing a disclosure with their appointing authority. If you're elected, you file that with the town clerk and you have to do it before you take action. If you've done that before you take action, then you've rendered any conclusion that you would act for a reason other than the right reason unreasonable. Okay? So I often get questions, well, what happens if in the middle of a meeting I realize, oh my goodness, this is a person that I actually have a different relationship with, or I knew when I was in college, or whatever it is. As soon as you become aware of something, that's when you want to disclose it. So ideally, it would be before a meeting where a matter is going to be discussed. If you're sitting there and then you, you know, come to a realization, you either would disclose if you're elected and you could continue. If you're appointed, you would make a disclosure. And if you were really concerned about it, you could recuse, which is not participate until you've made a disclosure with your appointing authority. So that's section 23B3. And that's when you don't have an actual financial interest. And so we're going to talk about these other statutes and then how they all relate to each other. So let's look at section, let's see what comes next. I think it's 17. Let's keep going. One more. Yeah. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, section 17. So section 17 prohibits a municipal employee, including a special municipal employee or anyone who is a volunteer, from participating in a matter on behalf of anyone other than the town in a matter in which the town has a direct and substantial interest. Special municipal employees, so these are positions that are designated by the select board as special municipal employees and those employees or those persons are persons that work on a part-time basis or who don't get paid. And they have to be designated by the select board. It applies to everyone in a certain position. So for example, if the planning board were designated as special municipal employee, everyone on the planning board has that designation, even if one person has been the person that asked for it and it continues to apply until that the select board decides to reverse that decision. And those people who've been designated as specials can appear on behalf of someone other than the town in front of other boards, but not in front of their own. Okay? If you're not a special municipal employee, you can't appear on behalf of anyone other than the town in any matter in which the town has a direct and substantial interest. What does it mean to appear or represent or act as an agent for? It means making a phone call to the town. It means coming in and actually interacting with town officials, signing a plan, signing a letter, putting an architect stamp on a plan. Okay? So if it's going to be before your own board and you're special, and I think most committees in town are special municipal employees, designated as special municipal employees, you could appear, if you're on the planning board, you could appear before the Board of Health on behalf of someone else, but you couldn't appear before the planning board on behalf of someone else. Okay? So section 17 applies differently to special municipal employees. It's less restrictive. All right? Okay. Section 19. So section 19 is a statute that deals with actual financial interests. And that's a financial interest that you personally have, that any member of your immediate family might have, or any business where you're a trustee or a board of directors, or lastly, your employer would have. So you're prohibited from acting in your official capacity on a matter which would implicate the financial interests of any of those entities. For land use boards, you're presumed to have a financial interest in any property that you live next door to, that you live directly across the street from, or that you're in a butter, two in a butter within 300 feet. Okay? And it doesn't matter if it's a positive or negative interest. If it's positive, if it's $1 positive or $1 negative, that still counts as a financial interest. Okay? So it's not just that this will be a savings for somebody. It doesn't matter, both positive and negative. And it has to be direct or reasonably foreseeable to be prohibited by section 19. Okay? If it's, you know, a potential in a million different ways, if town meeting votes yes or town meeting votes no, that's different. And you might want to do a disclosure under 23B3, but you wouldn't be prohibited from participating. There is an exemption for appointed officials. There is no exemption for elected officials. For appointed officials, you can request from the, from the appointing authority essentially an exemption to participate even though you have a financial interest. And the appointing authority has to decide, are they comfortable with you participating? Do they think that your financial interest is less important to you than the interests of the community at large? And that's what the conflict of interest law is doing. It's saying you kind of have one main interest and that's the town. Okay? So if you have a committee where, I used an example earlier, you have a garden committee and I happen to deal with a garden in one particular place in town and I happen to live next door, but I have great gardening skills, which I don't, and I've shown interest in gardening issues in the past and you think, you know, let's say the board was the appointing authority and the board thinks, even though Lauren lives next door, she'd be a really important member of this committee, you can give an exemption for that. I have to ask for it before I participate. After is too late. Okay? Okay, so that's section 19. There is no similar exemption for elected officials. All right, then let's go to section 20. Section 20 has to do with having more than one position with the town that's paid. And it's essentially intended to prevent people from getting the inside track on good jobs. Okay? That's, that's kind of the same rule. You're allowed to have any number of unpaid positions with the town. So you can be a volunteer in any number of committees that you want to. You can volunteer in an office. Adding an unpaid position is not an issue. Adding a second paid position raises this section 20 issue. And you can add, if you're a special municipal employee, it's very easy to add a second position. If it's unrelated to your first job, you just file a disclosure with the clerk. If it's related to your first job, you get approval from the select board. For a general or regular municipal employee, and this one, we can go and think to the next page, it's a little bit more difficult. It's still possible. It has to be a contract with a different department that's made after public notice or typically that's a newspaper, newspaper ad. A written disclosure is filed with the clerk. And if it's for personal services, has to be outside of normal hours of your first position, no more than 500 hours a year. The department head has to say they need you or they need somebody and the board of selection approves. So this second position with the town thing used to be much more complicated, even when the other positions were just volunteer. If you had a paid position, it was a whole process. The regulations that the Ethics Commission issued just a few years ago allow any number of unpaides to be added. Another option with respect to this type of situation is if, let's just say it was with the first department, but it really makes sense to have this person do all of these jobs, you could combine the job description and one person holds a job that has several components. Okay? So that's section 20. So I kind of want to double back to the relationship between section 23B3 and section 19 because this really has to do with the disclosure question. When is a disclosure required? When is it allowed? And when is participation just prohibited? If you have a section 19 conflict and you're an elected official, you don't have a choice. You cannot participate. If you have a section 19 conflict and you're an appointed official and you haven't asked for an exemption, you don't have a choice. You cannot participate. Okay? So when you have a section 19 conflict, which is a financial interest that's direct and reasonably foreseeable, you, you're done if you're an elected official. What does it mean to recuse yourself? Recusal does not just mean sitting at the table and not speaking. It actually means standing up and either sitting in the audience or leaving the room. Okay? It also means that if you get up to speak, you get up as an individual, you have the same rights as anybody else in the room and you're not entitled to any kind of special treatment. I made a joke this morning, you can't glare at the other members of your board, you can't get up first in line and say, hey, I'm a member of this board, my opinion really matters. It does matter, just like everyone else's matters. You have to wait. If the chair were to decide, we're not having any public comment on this issue, you don't get to say anything if you recused yourself. If you sit at the table when you have a section 19 conflict and you don't get up and leave, the Ethics Commission views that as participation, even if you don't say it were. Okay? So when you know that taking action in your official capacity is going to affect your direct financial interest and you're an elected official and can't participate, and that means getting up and leaving the table. Okay? The Ethics Commission will often say you have to leave the room. We think you still have First Amendment right to be present. The open meeting law requires that people be allowed to be present, so you have the right to be here if you want.
Here's a question. What happens if there's four selectmen here or five and we're discussing a restaurant, for example, and someone brings them bread and someone does their laundry and someone else does their, mows their lawn? All of a sudden, we're down to two people on a five-person board. How do we handle that?
That's, that's a really good question. So this brings up this difference between what's a prohibited financial interest and what's an appearance of a conflict. And so each person would need to identify whether taking that action, participating in the discussion and voting, would have a direct impact on their business. So let's take mowing a lawn. If what they're asking for is a lawn mowing license, I know that doesn't exist, but let's say it was, then the person who has the lawn mowing situation couldn't participate because that would be a financial interest. If they give the license, they get to mow the lawn. If they don't, they don't get to mow the lawn. Direct financial interest. As compared to something that's a little more, let's say there's bread delivery and laundry for this same entity. Those are relationships that exist. It's an appearance of a conflict for sure because a reasonable person might conclude that you would act or fail to act, that the, the other people would act or fail to act because of their pre-existing relationship. Disclosing it, saying, you know, we have this relationship, we have this business relationship, or this person lives across the street from me, or is my best friend, or I went to college with, or high school, or any of those things renders the conclusion that you would act for a reason other than a good reason, the town's interest, unreasonable. So under those circumstances, each person would have to analyze whether they have an actual financial conflict of interest which prohibits them or whether they can make a disclosure that would then allow them to vote. Okay? Now, everybody has, has the ability to analyze that themselves. One of the things I always say about the public records law is the conflict belongs to the individual. So each individual would think about it. It's useful when you have an agenda ahead of time and you know who the parties are to look at that and to say, okay, is there a particular conflict here that I would like to get out on the table or appearance of a conflict? So you can file a disclosure if you're elected with the town clerk. And then I would recommend that at the beginning of any kind of conversation like that, you just say, I filed a disclosure with the town clerk. I'd also like to make it clear on the record, I have this business relationship, this lawn mowing license, for example, doesn't have a direct and reasonably foreseeable financial interest and I believe I can act on this in accordance with law, in a manner consistent with law. So that's, that is kind of the tension between the two. Hypothetically, if three people out of the five had an actual prohibited financial interest, then there would have to be the invocation of the rule of necessity. And the rule of necessity requires a whole bunch of different steps. It should never be undertaken lightly because if you don't actually have a, a conflict amongst a quorum, you can't use it. So for that, we would really suggest checking in with counsel and having kind of a script to follow and making sure that the perceived conflicts are actual conflicts because that's really important.
Thanks.
So again, for the, for the disclosures, for elected officials, file with the town clerk ahead of time if you're able. If something comes up while you're sitting and you feel like that's something that needs to be disclosed, fine to just disclose at the table. You have to do it in a manner which is public in nature. Just one last thing, I know especially in smaller communities, this is something we were talking about earlier, lots of people know each other, lots of people have pre-existing relationships. Someone said to me, you know, should I file an disclosure that everybody that ever comes before me I've probably met in one capacity or another? The Ethics Commission doesn't love blanket disclosures. If you're in a particular business though, and you think it's important that someone goes to look at all these disclosures in the clerk's office, that it's important that it says, you know, I'm an architect and we have people come before us for building permits or whatever it is, or come before us for approval of subdivision plans, go ahead and file that. It doesn't mean you shouldn't file another one if someone else comes in who you have a, a direct personal relationship with. So blanket disclosure is fine for a first step, but you still need to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
It's very helpful. Being in this small town, we're all two degrees separation away from everybody in this room. So I, I want us to, to not recuse as much. I want us to disclose and vote. That was my question to you of what's that fine line? And you said you, as chair, cannot make someone not recuse. It's the individual's choice.
That's right.
I thought that was important.
That's right, yeah. Conflict laws, the conflict belongs to an individual. You know, sometimes in, in my experience dealing with other boards, a, a chair might perceive that someone actually has a conflict and the individual thinks they don't. And, you know, the chair will say to me, you know, does that mean I can tell them they can't vote? And the answer to that is no, the conflict belongs to the individual. There's other things you could do. You could adopt a policy about the way to approach perceived conflicts. You could put a matter off until a different time. You could request that an individual either seek advice of counsel or seek advice from the state Ethics Commission. But again, from a legal perspective, the potential conflict belongs to the individual. And I might just note for people's personal knowledge that the Ethics Commission is very serious about conflicts. And so it's better with, the advice I usually give is if you feel uncomfortable, best to stop and ask why rather than participate, you know, without and say, oh, I'll deal with it later. So asking why, kind of taking cues from what, why does this feel uncomfortable and what is it, is it prohibited or is it just an appearance? What are my options for dealing with that? There's also this statute, chapter 268A, is in the criminal section of the general laws. The open meeting law and the public records law are in the administrative sections of the, of the general laws. So participation under 20 or, I mean, multiple contracts under 20, participating in a matter in which you have a financial interest under 19, it can have serious consequences and it's important to really kind of be on the lookout for yourself for red flags. It's sometimes a good thing if someone else says to you, hey, do you have a conflict here because you might not realize. I also like to say you should really be looking at it from kind of the vantage point of a stranger. You know, just because everyone in town might know, if someone else wouldn't, but it would be reasonable for them to think that you would act or fail to act based on a prior relationship, better to disclose, even if you think everyone else in the room already knows.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, we're moving on for adoption of the October 10, 2018 special town meeting warrants. I know we have some, probably some questions and comments on some of these articles. We also have an additional article.
Yep. So what was in your packet has slightly changed a bit for your discussion. And I'm just going to take you through what that is. Article one is a zoning bylaw amendment which contains definitions for marijuana. This is proposed to you from the planning board and planning directors here, if you have any specific questions. However, there isn't something of an issue that has arisen. It's on page, it's on the next page, Erica. There's a comment. In this section here, section B, the issue has to do with this, the sort of buffer between an establishment and certain types of operations that are listed here. Public or private schools, school license, state license, daycare centers, et cetera. Some of this is mandated in state law. However, the planning board has, has somewhat expanded it and there's been some internal discussion about that, specific to the activity. So the, this line there that says, or a recreational facility or personal services establishment providing activities or services to children. And the internal discussion was, should the word primarily be inserted after the word services so that it would read providing activities or services primarily to children? So we had a tiny bit of discussion about it at the agenda meeting today, but we've had some, some staff and town council discussion about it as well. And I would leave it to you all to discuss if you want to do that or not. Andrew has suggested that potentially if there's, if we're not quite sure right now, there could, there could, it could maybe be addressed in a planning board motion.
I, I can comment on this. I, I thought it was too restrictive. I like the state's version of a private school or K through 12 or a daycare center. Those are, those are places where you kind of have to take your, your kids. For something that has a, say Tuesdays at four o'clock, storytelling at a certain business, I don't think that's, I don't think, I think that's too much. Those could come in really fast. I'd, I would like to either take it out or really try to put some kind of language in primarily or the major service of that location. Right? Does that make sense? To me, it's too restrictive.
Or, or you could mimic the state law.
The, the, the language from the medical, I thought, expanded a little bit on the recreational and I just, I liked the way it was worded a little bit better. The personal services kind of jumped out at me of that that could be The personal services kind of jumped out at me of that, that could be really broad. I mean, I would think personal services would be where I get my child's haircut or, you know, ice cream shop, those kind of things.
Yeah, who defines personal services?
That's, so do we have a reading from the planning board on what they, why they added this, maybe from the planning staff?
Thank you. So, um, the planning board looked at other, what other communities have been doing. Uh, and again, this is for, uh, for recreational marijuana. And many communities are inserting, uh, additional standards in their bylaws. The board talked about, um, at this stage of the process, when you adopt a warrant, if it's something that wants to be considered during the public hearing process and it's not there, it can't be added. It always can be subtracted out during the public process through the planning board. Through their recommendation to town meeting, uh, it also could be amended on the floor. So, if you, they don't have a problem with the word "primarily." And again, I think the example of, unfortunately, we don't have a definition of a private school. So, that's where recreational facility or personal services, that's where it falls under.
Okay.
Because we don't have a definition of private school. So, ice cream shop, just so you know, is retail. That's not going to count.
Right, sorry. The haircut, I was thinking, is personal services. Ice cream shop was something else that came up.
Where, where would like Strong Wings or the Boys Club fall?
Uh, those are clubs or a rec, there could be a recreational facility.
So, they could, they could be, well, they're not daycare. Where would they fall in this definition?
Under a recreational facility.
Okay.
Right. So, a camp, I mean, a camp, some of those things would, would, um, you know, would count here. And again, it's, it's a practice that we've seen in a lot of other communities and thought that it should be included. I mean, the other action that the board can take is reduce the separation as well. So, again, I think it's important to remember where we are in the process here. So, if you, if you want to narrow it down before we get to town meeting, you certainly have the right to do that in the, in the adoption process of the warrant.
So, I think it's early days. I think typically, you know, at least my own view is we, we respect the recommendations that come from, uh, the, the planning board, uh, unless it's real egregious and I don't see this as that. And there is a process of, uh, fine tuning as we go through the review of warrant articles. So, I'm comfortable leaving it in the way it is.
My only concern is that it's so constrictive already. There's not a lot of zoning for marijuana retail shops. So, by, potentially by putting this in, could make that even smaller.
Yeah, I would agree. We've already run into trouble with the, with the medical definition, that 500-feet boundary, or separation. And I, I would agree, I, I like the addition of "primarily," although I'm a little bit thrown off by the personal services as well because it feels like a gray area. I also just wanted to, uh, could you remind me when there's an existing recreational facility, marijuana facility, and a daycare wants to move into the neighborhood? What happens then?
So, the existing facility is essentially, if it's properly permitted and everything else, it's grandfathered at that location.
Yeah.
So, it would not, it would not be forced to close under those circumstances.
Okay.
I believe town council can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's the, the time of applicant, when the application comes in. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, man, I kind of think you can't make it more restrictive on town meeting floor. You can make it less restrictive. So, you know, if I'm, is what Andrew's sort of saying, correct?
Right.
So, I think, you know, there's nothing wrong with going through the public process at this level. If we want to make 500 feet, 250 feet, if we want to make, you know, add, make it less restrictive, we can do that. But if we get to town meeting or get to the planning process and people want it more restrictive, and we're getting some letters already to that extent, uh, on Old South Road, we can't change it. So, I think that, you know, I think that's an important distinction. We have, if you're, you know, you can make it less so, you can't make it more so.
I like the addition of the word "primarily." I think that makes sense. And I, I just want to define personal services more is, and what those, what would fall under.
And again, that can happen through the process. Again, a subset of personal services can be refined through the planning board regulation. If you, hopefully, you're not, you're not talking about doing that on the fly tonight.
No, no, I, I was talking about during the review process, I would want to see that broken down a little bit more.
Right. And I think that we would look, you know, again, there would be the analysis of where these different facilities are. And, you know, the board may, in fact, when we dig into this, you know, we may, we may make some recommendations to reduce it ourselves, so.
So, I'd ask Libby, is town council comfortable with adding the word "primarily"?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with "primarily." Just my concern is not making it too restrictive to where we, we give two, we limit it to two licenses or three or four, whatever it is, and then we don't allow these businesses to succeed. I just want to make sure we're thinking through that.
Yeah.
So, I'm okay with "primarily."
So, do we make a motion to insert "primarily," or is that?
Do we need a motion or is it just direction, suggestion?
Sounds like a consensus, and I'll just add it.
So, I'd make a motion that we add the word "primarily" after the word "services."
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
All right. Article two is another zoning bylaw amendment that came from planning at your request, which is Use Charts Amendment for Recreational Marijuana. We already have them for medical. So, this was the corresponding recreational. No issues there, I don't think. Article three is a general bylaw amendment relating to marijuana in general. And it's got three articles to the, the new chapter that would be in the town code. The first has to do with public consumption of marijuana. And to, it, over the past few days, we've had some internal discussion that the police chief and I have discussed. And it relates to the possession of marijuana in municipal buildings. We talked to town council about, about it this afternoon. And as a result, there's some additional wording proposed on the screen here. And it basically would prohibit the possession of marijuana in, in municipal buildings. Some of the issue is, is our municipal buildings, like town-owned housing, for example. So, this covers the concern, I believe. So, this was, this just, this was not in your packet.
So, even though there's state law that allows you to have so many plants in your house, but that, that's a primary residence, though. You have to own the home.
Correct.
To be able to do that. So, this is.
And so, schools are covered under some other rule? So, that's, is there a reason they're not in this?
Schools are covered under another rule, correct?
Okay.
They're very specific to schools.
Okay.
So, if the board is okay with this, Jill just noticed there's some renumbering that needs to occur. So, we'll do that. You've seen, I think, most of these, uh, other articles. They've, they've been in the packet.
Thank you.
However, there is a, a new article that came up today. Article, I stuck it in to become Article 10. That is a supplemental appropriation for repairs to the town pier. As the board will recall, we were bidding out for repairs to the town pier. And to make a long story short, the bids have come in higher than anticipated. So, we would like to get a supplemental appropriation at the special town meeting so that we can proceed with these repairs this fall as planned. And I, finance director is away right now, but he and I have discussed the possibility of, if there were projects like this that came up, possibility of free cash being a potential funding source. Free cash will be certified before the special town meeting. So, that, so that is a potential funding source.
Libby, I think there's somebody that wanted to speak about Article, is it four or five? It's okay. Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rick Bodett. I'm representing Seth Rutherford and Chris Delant and their company, 253 Organics, with respect to their desire to open a recreational marijuana facility here on Nantucket. Uh, this, this article is of particular importance and interest to my clients because obviously, and I know you all know what this is, it limits the number of facilities that are, are going to be allowed on Nantucket if it's passed. And I realize this is, uh, obviously, the opening stages here. I realize as voters, we need to vote this in if this is what we want. So, I'm going to keep this really brief and just make a couple of comments. Uh, I just, I think, at the outset, obviously, uh, even when I see this limitation, my gut reaction is that a limitation of what will, I think, amount to two, is a good idea as a resident and as a parent here. However, I, I think, I just want the board to, to know and be reminded of the fact that if we limit, the more we limit these licenses, the more valuable they become, right? And I think that the moment one is granted, uh, it will, its value will be astronomical. And I think the danger of that, of course, is that, uh, it has the potential for the license holder to immediately want to sell that license to, and, and the fact is, they probably sell it to big business off-island. So, uh, and, and that might be a company that doesn't care about Nantucket one bit. So, um, so, uh, obviously, the board has to be very cautious about who they grant this to, particularly considering it sounds like you're going to have a, a difficult time limiting transfers in the future, potentially. It was good to see the provision, uh, I think it was in Article one, about, uh, a special permit requirement that is specific to an applicant and that has to change with a change of applicant. But I think, as we all probably know, any applicant for a special permit is going to be an LLC. And I don't know that we can prevent anyone from selling shares of an LLC after the fact, and the applicant might remain the same. So, in any event, that's our concern. I mean, we want the board to be particularly cautious who they grant these licenses to. And of course, you know, our preference would be that there is no limit, that, that the free market determines what the limit is, of course. Or that, I, I suppose, a, as an alternative, perhaps the limit could go up to a certain, a, a greater percentage. So, um, so that is essentially all I had to say. As I said, I understand this is really in the beginning stages. And I think a lot of these, uh, bylaw changes are a good thing for Nantucket. And we just wanted to comment on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been something we've been talking about since, what, a year and a half? What happens when, even if there's six licenses, anybody could sell them to anybody. That's one of our concerns.
Another, another concern is, is, which we've seen with liquor licenses, is when you have too many, then people are, and then you've got another situation where people are getting really aggressive to try to compete because, because there's too many, there's too many out there. And that, and that's when you see a lot of the most egregious problems is because there's so many out there that everyone, you know, i- i- is complaining about it. So, there's a fine line between having too few and having too many in a situation like this. And I think that, you know, I think sort of what I hope the board has do, said is, you know, is, you know, it's easier to let the reins out than to pull them all back in. And, you know, I've, I have friends in Aspen, Colorado, and they wish they had been a little more careful than they were. So, I, I think that's sort of in the, you know, at least my position, but.
Thank you, Matt.
Well, and us putting this on the warrant is just bringing it forth to the voters. It's not us making the decision.
And I would really like to understand all the ways that we can, uh, to keep it small and to have that local preference. And if that's baked into our host community agreements or however we do it. And I am struggling a little bit with this idea of how we approve without criteria. And I know we've talked about it a bit at the last meeting. Being able to look at the various applications and compare them side by side so that we can really, if there is a limitation, or even if there's not, the ability to look at each one, um, and, and apply the same process to, to the decision-making. Um, and, and I think that will, you know, potentially help as well with keeping it local.
Actually, we're going to bring that up at a later agenda item. That, what you're concerned.
I also think it will potentially operate a bit differently because liquor licenses, they're sort of an endless supply. I do think the growing in cultivation is also going to be a limiting factor in what the market here can support because it has to be so local. So, I think it will be a little bit different than liquor.
Right. Like, imagine if all of the liquor was made here.
Yeah. It'd be very different.
Anything else, Matt?
We're going to talk about it.
Yeah. Thank you, Libby.
So, that's basically it for the special town meeting warrant, if you are ready to adopt it.
Any questions or comments on any other articles?
Make a motion to adopt the warrant.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Matt?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. That passes unanimously.
Can people hear me?
Can you get closer?
Okay.
Okay. Action on request to Secretary of State's Office for local ballot question to be placed on November 6, 2018, state election ballot.
So, we have two ballot questions. There, there are two warrant articles that are subject to debt exclusions, which are subject to these ballot questions. They are in your packet, the letter is in your packet, and they relate to the transportation improvements in the Old South Road area, which is one article, and the other is in the Milestone Road area. And you have discussed this before. There is a deadline with the Secretary of State's Office to get local ballot questions onto the state ballots. And you don't have to schedule your own special election. And that deadline is August 1st. So, we just need to, this is the action that makes that happen.
Good. Questions, comments, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to review, finalization of draft host community agreement for signing of adult-use marijuana retailer, marijuana, marijuana cultivator and marijuana product manufacturer with Green Lady Dispensary, located at 11 Amelia Drive. This is continued from our last meeting on July 11th.
There were, I believe, three outstanding issues from your meeting, your last meeting. And they had to do with the energy plan and whether or not that had been reviewed by the Energy Office, which it has been, and I don't think there are any.
Warrant here.
Issues. Do you want to say anything about?
Lauren Sinatra Energy Courteir. No, just an update that I'm pleased that, uh, the organization has agreed to participate in the town's aggregation program and will be buying the 100% green product. And we'll be closely communicating with my office on what their energy efficiency plan will be and how to implement that locally. So, um, I was impressed with their plan. I thought all of the, um, the goals were aggressive and positive. So, I, I was pleased to see, um, how they responded to our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. The second item had to do with the sewer department and the discharge from the growing operation. And I did not have a chance to speak with David about that today, but, um, he was sent the information and I'm not sure his reaction.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I've come to learn way too much about marijuana byproducts and waste and everything than I care to know. Just, there was some concerns. I had actually stated that we were looking to have a couple of different-sized tanks or different types of tanks outside the, the establishment. One would be a settling tank, and the other one was a grease trap-style tank. A lot of the wastes that are produced by, um, any kind of grow facilities can contain anything from stems, leaves, buds, stalks, soils, root balls. That was the reason why I had asked about a settling tank. And the grease trap is, uh, all the oils that come off of the, um, the, the plants and the products. We could get, we could capture some of that grease and that oil in the tank before it gets discharged into the sewer. Those were some of my biggest concerns, and that's why I had put that in the letter. A couple of other things that have, uh, I've recently learned about more often. Some of the other byproducts of the, the product, which these settling tanks and these grease traps will help capture, are, and some of the byproducts are pretty nasty. Butane, ethanol and acetone are different, in different steps of the cultivation or the processing or manufacturing. These are just other items that could help be captured in these tanks before discharge into the, the public sewers. So, that's what, that was my reason why I put that in. I have talked to a bunch of other wastewater plants and facilities in the state just to get more information on it. So, that, that was where my concerns were. Washing, when they wash any of their utensils or their trays or anything like that, that all gets discharged ultimately into the sewers. Settling tanks will help capture. Settling tanks will help capture any of that debris. That was my biggest concern. We don't want any of the pot and soils and stuff to continue downstream to the plant. And just another, just a quick number, just to, to get, put some other stuff in perspective. Washington State last year had 1.7 million pounds of plant waste from manufacturing facilities. Just a number to keep in mind, but it's just some of the other stuff I've learned going through this process. But if there's any other questions.
Was that 1.7 million in the sewer flow, or was that?
No, that was just plant waste. You've got to consider, there's a bunch of other wastes, soils, leaves, and all that. Other stock has to go somewhere.
Is there any other business on the island that would be similar, similar chemicals? Do you have settling tanks for them?
The, one of the ones recently we had was, we had the, the doggy wash station out by the airport. We had actually specified specific-sized filters and multiple filters on that for dog hair. And we were very regulated on the chemicals that they were using, because a lot of the flea dips and stuff were extremely toxic to sewers. So we had to watch that a lot. But any kind of production of, with anything that had, that can extract an oil or promote or produce an oil can be very harmful to our wastewater streams and our pipes.
I'm going, I'm going to doubt, and I'd love to hear Green Lady get up, but I doubt that they're going to be using butane and that type of stuff. That, that's, you know, sort of a cheap way that some people have done it, but I think most of it's going to be with pressure, with extracting with pressure.
That's just some of the waste that could be.
Yeah, and usually that happens when they're, when they're processing it a different manner. And if you process it with a press, then you, you know, you avoid using those.
But one thing I will say, we are already seeing an increased level of acetone in our wastewater streams. Don't know what exactly where it's coming from yet, but it could be connected in some way.
Any other questions for Dave?
So the, well, the other, you're asking what other businesses, the restaurants are all, have, you know, fairly strict grease trap, you know, grease trap standards and, and things. And, you know, and I've, and I think, you know, we don't have all that much grease in my operation. We don't have a fry later and that kind of stuff. But it's amazing, like I have a, a settling tank kind of outside in the driveway that I pump out twice a year. And it, it's amazing how much is there on something.
Milk is huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
And it's things you wouldn't think of that, that have caused it, so.
So it sounds like the language that was sent to you is okay with you.
Yes, yeah. I just, those were my concerns. I just wanted to bring forward, so.
Thank you. Thanks, David.
The only other issue was the financial payments, and I don't know that those changed.
I assume the 25,000 for, remind me which fee it was.
It was the annual community benefit fee, I believe.
Okay.
And the only, the other issue I had that I brought up, sort of after, I thought about it and brought up after the meeting, was we aren't going to be able to have it happen. No, you can't grow off island and bring it here anyway. But one of the, and one of the things that the board has talked about is trying to keep it local so that the local growers can sell to the local companies. And not having it come over from the other side, in my mind, is a good idea. And I wonder if that's something that we could write into the agreement. And I asked that of Jason and Libby, and I think we received a legal opinion on it, correct?
Sorry, the question, what was it?
In our host agreement, can we say that any product sold here has to be made here?
I'm not sure if Katie, did she?
You guys asked her the question.
I'm not sure, but I think that the answer was it kind of has to be, right? Kind of has to be.
Well, what if the federal law changes?
Yeah.
I think.
And I, and that's what I'm, and it will change. Like the idea that it will continue this way is, you know, when you have some of the bigwigs that you have joining the large corporations, you know, I don't, I think it will change, and it will be allowed to be on the boat. So I think if we want to say we want it local, I think we have to write it into our host agreement that it has to be local. So I would, you know, I would favor, if it's legal to do it, I would like to have it in there. Is it legal to do it?
Good evening, Adam Fine, on behalf of the Green Lady. We would have no objection to that provision. I don't want to opine on the legality of it for the town, for the town, but certainly have no objection to it.
If the federal law never changes, then it's moot point.
Because we have it in our agreement.
But it's there in case.
And we, and at our discretion, we could take it out, but in a future, board could take it out, maybe.
Bob Cole for Lincoln Street. The local issue for the host agreement? You needed to look at the, the local issue in the first five articles that you just sent into town meeting. From what I've read, and I'm not a lawyer, but it was very limiting to local licenses by the way you've zoned it, by saying no home occupation, not being, I don't even think a co-op grow could work under your articles that you're sending to the town. So the local issue should be something you're working on, but the host agreement is one thing, but the five other recreational is going to be a much bigger issue. And I don't think you really addressed that issue at all, which is a little different than the host agreement.
And so we still don't know from, we have a, do we have an opinion from town council if that, if adding that is legal?
Mr. Chairman, if a Green Lady is willing to insert that into the agreement, I certainly have no objection to that. I will check with Katie Lockman in the morning just to make sure that I'm not missing something. So we can certainly, I can certainly have Katie provide the language for inclusion in the final version of the agreement, subject to the board's direction on that.
Okay. Do I feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Direction there to put that in? Is there another comment, okay?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Rick Bodett for Seth Rutherford and Crisco Laurent. It should probably come with no surprise that this particular application is of interest to us, particularly considering there may be a limit in the near future as to how many facilities there can be on Nantucket. I, I just want to say at the outset that if there wasn't any limit, I wouldn't be standing here. Or if there was no proposed limit, I should say, I wouldn't be standing here. And of course, we, we don't wish to oppose specifically this applicant on any basis. And so my comments tonight are really limited to the process that you've gone through. And I will also say, of course, that I realize the work that you have all put into this already, including staff and the applicant. And I realize I'm standing here when the applicant is at the goal line. However, having said that, I do question the actual process that you've gone through for this application for two reasons. Number one, or for any applications that might come before you. Number one, in comparison to some towns, some towns are doing it exactly like you are. Other towns are requiring applicants to go through every town process before the select board will even accept an application. I think that's a prudent way to do it. We're all starting this from scratch, you are, right? So whatever you choose is the way it is. I understand that. I'm not questioning the legality of it. I guess I'm, I'm questioning the wisdom of it. The second reason why I, I think that the, the process seems to be a little bit on its head is that, is because of your, this board's longstanding policy of the way you've handled liquor licenses. I've been permitting, applying to this board for liquor licenses for 15 years. And I can't think of an exception to the rule that this board has that nothing gets granted at this board for a liquor license until all the towns, all the town departments have weighed in about whether everything has been granted or not. For instance, you know, there were many times when it was Ann, when it was Tracy, and, and now it's Amy. Particularly when it was under the perky of the board, that the first thing that, that Tracy or Ann would do is email the, all the town departments, does this person have all the permits? If the answer was no, I could rarely get on the agenda for a liquor license. There are times when I was on the agenda, but I never got a, never got a license without, say, a planning board special permit. And so I was a little surprised to hear that this, the board is, is doing something different here, particularly with this substance in mind, right? I mean, I think we can probably all agree, for better or for worse, you know, alcohol is sort of universally accepted by us, right? And, and I don't think marijuana is there yet. If there's, and I know you've taken caution, and I'm not saying you haven't, but it's, it's a particularly hot-button issue. And I'm, I'm really surprised that, that each applicant doesn't have to go through all these public processes that have public hearings before they get a host agreement assigned with you guys. So again, we, we don't want to specifically oppose the applicant. If there wasn't a proposed limit, we'd be wishing them luck. However, we think the prudent thing to do is to hold off on any licenses, sorry, any host agreements, until, and, and by the way, I'm not even saying until after town meeting. I'm saying until any applicant has a special permit, until they've done their community outreach meetings, et cetera. So again, that's just my comment on the process, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. I was going to bring this up even without Mr. Bodett's comments. Some of the choices we have before us is to wait for all applicants after special town meeting, even this HCA. Or we could approve this one and then come up with more significant criteria for the remaining three, or six, or 25 applicants that we have in the next two months. So there's a couple of different ways to look at this. Either way, we're going to come up with criteria, and town council sent us some different examples of other, we don't need to talk about the criteria tonight, and to be specific, but when do, how do we want to start the process? I think we do, something that we could.
I think we've learned a lot. Our first applicant didn't move forward and still prob, and still searching, and maybe they are, but, and, and we approved them because we had to have medical, and they were medical. And we've since found out that they were, they were grandfather for recreational. So maybe they will, we will see them now. We'll see. I would feel uncomfortable sort of putting the hold on Green Lady because of, you know, they've done probably 99%, maybe 100% of what they're, we're expecting them to do, and they've made substantial, and substantial investment, and they've already begun the process. So I think that we, it would be unfair at this point to, to ding them. I don't think it would be unfair to put, like you're saying, put the rest of the people into a pot and come up with criteria, et cetera, you know? But I, I think it would be unfair to put the kibosh to them right now. So I've just been very impressed with the cooperative nature of the process that they've gone through, and whether I, you know, agree with it or not. And they've been, it's just been, it's been very, it's been a pleasure. They're very professional, very passionate about what they do. They seem to have excellent people that work with them. And they've really accommodated everything, you know, that we've asked them. Even, even their attorneys are nice, and so I'll tell you, that's just. Are you going to say that's rare? That's really, really nice, so. So I, I just, I don't know if that's a good reason, but I, you know, I'd want to continue to process their application, and I'd certainly be in favor of it tonight.
May I?
Yeah.
We didn't officially decide to even bring forth to town meeting the limitation until after, we were already very far down the road with negotiating this host community agreement with Green Lady. They're already completely licensed as medical, built, almost ready to open. And I, I think it would be inappropriate for us to pull back on them now. I do think we should establish our criteria if there's a limitation, which is completely going to be up to town meeting. And I also think that if other people apply for medical, we should go through the process with them. But I'd like to, if it is limited, I would like to see us establish the criteria for how we're going to go forward, but not limit what we've already started.
Rita, do you have any comments?
I think, you know, it really is, I think all of us feel caught between a rock and a hard place. And again, really speaking to how, how professional and how well the applicants have really answered our concerns, our questions, and been very accommodating. And, and I very much appreciate, particularly some of the energy and the water consumption, and being really ahead of the curve. I do think, and I would be somewhat of a stickler for having process and clear and consistent policy. So I am struggling with knowing that we may have a limitation imminent and how that might change our criteria for other businesses. I really want it to be as fair as possible, but I think to Dawn's point that we already have maybe mistakenly gone so far down the path, or maybe it was out of our control because of how quickly it's changing. So I think it's, it's a tough one, and I don't, I don't particularly like being in a situation where the rules are different for other businesses. But I think because of where we are, I would, I would also be leaning towards granting it tonight.
If you think about it, a couple of thoughts. Six weeks ago, there was really only one applicant before us. Right? So it's just recently where we, we have three additional, so we're having to discuss other things. And we also don't know if it's going to pass at special town meeting. We don't know if it's going to be a limitation of two. We're speculating.
Yeah. I think it's very important that we do develop those criteria very quickly.
I agree.
So we've, I think we've heard that from Libby that those were the only changes that were recommended to the agreement? There are no other changes, nothing else? And I think from John, we've had to heard from the applicant, they're willing to make that accommodation. So I would make the motion that we approve the host community agreement with Green Lady.
Before we get a second on that, can I, I'll let Mr. Cohen speak.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. You know, so I represent another applicant in this field, but I don't necessarily advocate one way or the other. But I do somewhat echo Mr. Bodett's suggestion that there's a little bit of an oddity here in the way it's being handled. And I'd point more specifically to the zoning bylaw that says that special permits for recreational marijuana facilities cannot even be applied for until after the moratorium ends in January 19. So I do find it a little odd that the board would be signing up on a host community agreement where the only rule in place that exists now says you can't apply for that special permit yet. And I would suggest that if you're looking for a legitimate reason to put this off, that, you know, I think the signal that the town sent to everybody was, don't come and apply until the moratorium's end. So the idea that you'd be granting a host community agreement several months in, in advance of that, I think it strikes, strikes a little bit of an odd tone. That doesn't mean people can't do their homework. It doesn't mean you can't get your paperwork ready. But granting a host community agreement when you can't legally apply for the special permit seems a little cart before the horse to me. Thanks.
Thank you. So let me ask a question of Mr. Cohen. Do you represent, who do you represent?
I represent Mass Med Spa, which is.
And they, and they have, they had come before us and had, and now they, what's the status of their application? Do they, do they have a location that they?
Yes.
They do?
They do. That application has been, so Mass Med. Mass Med Spa is now known as The Botanist. They've changed the, the name. It's an entirely new set of people. And that application for a new non-opposition letter has been filed with town administration. And we can get into that if you want to. I'd love to talk about it.
No, no, no.
But I'll save you the time. But the host community agreement.
That's fine. You answered my question.
My client's application is medical, and this is recreational.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, so you're concerned about sort of the order of operations?
I, I think so, yeah. I mean, I guess Mr. Bodett had a good point, that if the town bylaw says, don't apply for, you can't legally apply for a special permit until January 2019, how can the town enter into a contract with someone for that kind of an issue? I think that the message was pretty clearly put out there, don't apply yet. And, you know, that's the way I would read it if you look at the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sort of perplexed by that. They haven't applied for the special permit yet.
Right, but you're entering into a host community agreement for a license that no one can legally apply for yet.
But the processes that we've been following is how it's been laid out to us by town council and is what other towns with moratoriums have done. But I'm just pointing out, I don't, I don't, it may be a matter of opinion whether it's odd or not, but we've been following what we have found to be fairly standard practice with other municipalities.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating that you should or shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that, that the bylaw says that no one can apply for a special permit until January 2019. And if you were going to follow the process that you use for other permits, that would. And if you were going to follow the process that you use for other permits, that would suggest waiting until then. But, you know, you don't legally have to.
Yeah, and this is a completely different situation, and they probably won't apply for the special permit until after January 2019. That's not what they're applying for right now.
I just had a question, because actually, my understanding was that in order to apply for the special permit, you had to have a host community agreement.
That is so far how our process has worked out. And once we have the bylaws in place and all of that, we'll finalize regulations that lay out exactly what the process is. So this is all, I mean, I'm sure people understand, this is changing all the time. We changed these warrant articles three times since last week before they.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor. We've been discussing it, but it's not had a second. So I would suggest.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Second for discussion? Are you ready for a vote?
Second for discussion?
Discussion, it's about. She seconded, Dawn seconded.
I just had.
You can't hear me.
Just because we didn't discuss the 25,000 versus 50,000. Oh, yeah. I, I just had a question. We didn't discuss the other item, which was the 25,000 versus 50,000. And I thought some of the correspondence that we had in regards to the question of the legality of the 50,000 was interesting, and I was wondering where we stood on that, or if this motion included that $50,000.
This motion would include the 50, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. How's the board feel with that versus the original 25?
I would prefer to see it be 25, just because it does sound like there's going to be a bit of back and forth in the name of, again, being, having something that is applicable going forward and not having to come back to it. But I, I'm just sensing that the 50,000 might, there might be an issue with it in the future.
I was comfortable with the 25 originally, but I know other board members were concerned about it last week. I, I did want to note that for their medical, they did make a $50,000 contribution that went towards improvements to the two FG parking lot.
That was a once-off as opposed to this is an annual payment.
I believe if the, and Town Council, correct me if I'm wrong, if the state comes back Friday, or two months from now, and says you can't go over the 3%, then it could, it would not be honored. Or they wouldn't have to pay that, or.
And the 25 is over the 3%.
It is.
Right? So we're, even the 25, or I mean, a dollar is over 3, a dollar is over 3%. So.
I didn't catch that.
Does anybody want to make a friendly? Should we change the 25, or is this a discussion? It's 50 right now, Jim's motion.
I'm happy with either, it doesn't.
I would propose a friendly amendment to 25,000.
How does this work? Do you have to accept that or do you vote on that?
You'd have to get a second.
I'll second that amendment.
All those in favor?
Well, let's, can we talk about it first?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would rather see the 25 on the medical than on the recreational. The recreational is where the, where the, where the money's going to be. You know, so, you know, if we were going to change the, the, you know, the, the fee schedule, I'd rather it be the other way around.
Apparently.
I under, I understand, but so, but also if we drop it on the, if we drop it, would that be, you know, does that mean that the next host agreement, we're going to be at 25? When the next host agreement is going to be a recreational one, one most likely? These guys are lining up because of the recreational, and they're not lining up because of medical. You know, they're, they're, they're knocking down our doors because of, you know, we all saw the financials. They're knocking down our doors because of the recreational market that is potentially here, especially in the summer. So I think, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather put the lower number on the medical.
Mr. Chairman, we saw, I believe, their financials, $300,000 or $400,000 a year in tax revenues. We heard from the superintendent of schools about the impact that marijuana has on not only the development of, of children's brains, but also the use of marijuana, the impact it has within his school. We, we, we know we have a real drug and alcohol crisis in our community. And to me, given the dollars, $50,000 is a small amount. And that's why I proposed that last, last time.
Ready for a vote on the friendly? All those four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so that passes the 25. Now the motion for Jim is to approve the host community agreement as is, with the change of from 50 to 25. Is that correct? Was there already a second?
If Jim's still okay with his motion, that's, yeah, that's amended.
Eric, was there already a second on that originally?
Yeah, I seconded that.
Yeah.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the ratification of vote taken in executive session on July 12, 2018 to waive provision and purchase and sale agreement with Harbor Fuel.
There's an explanation sheet in your packet, and since the packet went out, there's been a minor wording change, which I emailed around yesterday, which has to do with adding some language that there may continue to be a fuel storage facility only at the current site, basically.
Do you want a motion?
Yep, it's like a motion, made discussion. Go ahead.
I would make a motion to remove. Oh, sorry, I know, you can't. I would make a motion to remove the restriction in the agreement that included obtaining an agreement from Winthrop and replace it with the language that Harbor Fuel agrees that neither Harbor Fuel nor its parent subsidiaries and/or affiliates. Is this the right language that I'm reading?
It's the item that says his.
Okay, Harbor Fuel agrees that following the expiration of its lease term in December 2019, neither Harbor Fuel nor its parent subsidiaries and/or affiliates should use the Winthrop property for bulk fuel storage purposes or operate a fuel storage facility thereon, except that Harbor Fuel may supply, use, and/or operate on the Winthrop property a fuel storage facility for the sole and exclusive purpose of providing fuel for retail sales to motor vessels in Nantucket Harbor.
For a second?
Second for a discussion, if needed. I just wanted to check in with those board members that had been part of the negotiations earlier and make sure that this providing fuel for retail sales was a part of the bigger picture from the start.
Well, on the, on the boat, for boating, we understood there would always be some fuel down there. I voted against this in executive session. I plan to vote against it again tonight because it's a change of language that doesn't guarantee that there will be no stuff down there, because Harbor Fuel might not operate, but someone else may operate. I doubt that will happen, but, but I, we, and when we, when we negotiated this, it was guaranteed not to happen, which is why we gave the deal we did to Harbor Fuel out on town property and everything else that we did. So I, you know, I will continue to, you know, vote against it because we didn't have to think about it when we made the agreement, and agreement's an agreement, so. But there was an intent to have, you know, fuel for boats. But there's also the big intent was to have no tanks down there other than the tanks for the boats.
Okay, yeah, there was always the understanding that we would need to provide boat fuel. Okay. In some, in some way.
Any other discussion?
I think it's incredibly unlikely that anyone will ever open a fuel storage facility down there or that we would license it.
Well, I think we heard that it would be difficult not to license it because it's currently licensed. So I don't see that as a deterrent. So I, I have the same concerns that Matt does, which I've, which I've, this is not new, so.
We did have a lot of internal discussion about this, and I think the conclusion was that the risk is very low because of all the setup and requirements that would be needed for a, a different group to come in and have a full-on fuel tank farm at that site within the timeframe between the time where the Harbor Fuel lease with Winthrop expires and they set up the new facility out elsewhere and the licensing that would happen. And it'd be quite complicated.
I'm comfortable taking, taking it for, for many reasons.
If this gets turned down again, though, then it gets used as, this was something that we should have taken care of long before now, correct? I mean, I'm.
Well, we, we kind of had, in the original agreement, we had taken care of it. And this change is the only thing that slightly gives me pause, but I, you know.
Ready for a vote? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Me too.
Me too. Okay, we're going to move committee.
Can I get some clarification?
That's not the vote that we took in executive session.
We were ratifying it, right?
Right.
So now we're voting to, we voted to not ratify it.
Okay.
No, you voted to ratify it.
You voted to ratify.
You just voted 3-2 to ban it. Yes.
No, no. Rita said no.
So it's 3-2, we ratified it in executive session, and then we just turned it down in open session.
Oh.
Yeah, that was. It was 3-2, no.
Can I, one point of clarification, maybe counsel can help me on this, is, um, no matter what, if we don't obtain a sign off from Winthrop by September, we close anyway. And Winthrop said no. So the only thing you're prohibiting is that we can't now close this month. So just, I just want to make sure that the board understands that that's what they're doing.
Or close at all. The restriction, as it is currently worded in the purchase and sale agreement, must happen in order for this arrangement to close. If, so basically, if it's not removed, then we are back to a different place. And there's been a significant amount of effort put into getting the tank farm out of town.
But it wasn't a unanimous vote, so.
Yeah, agree.
So the only thing I would say to the board is that this, this provision by, by adding this in does provide a level of protection to the town. And, you know, it may not go as far as some of the board members want in terms of an agreement from Winthrop. It does, it does restrict what Harbor Fuel can do on the property. So I, I'm just pointing that out.
But that's only if Winthrop signs it, and they said they're not going to.
So they said unless they get something.
They specifically said they're not going to unless we change their zoning, which I am not prepared to do as.
I don't know that they've said that. I did not know they said that. Did they say that to you?
Yeah, have there been conversations?
Yeah, I don't know. I've been, I'm not privy to those.
Yeah, I don't think, I've, I've not heard that comment specifically.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Libby, I heard that comment with you on the phone, with Shrin on the phone. That comment was made in front of you and I. Now, maybe it didn't get to you guys, but that was made.
That's, that's not information that we had.
We talked about it in executive session.
Yes, we did.
I brought it up, Dawn brought it up.
Yeah, no, it was mentioned in executive session, we're asking, when was that? When did that comment happen?
To our council.
On what exact day, but our council, it was told to our council, we brought it up in executive session. Just want to be clear.
Can we just back up? And so what, the intention of this was a ratification of the vote that we took in executive session with this additional language. Or that change in language.
And I thought that's what Dawn's motion was. Ratification with the new language from town council.
It was.
And it was voted 3 to 2.
Against.
Against.
And it was voted 4 to 1.
Oh, you voted no?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I think, I have a misunderstanding of exactly what we are voting on. Can you change your vote?
Yes.
Yes, you can change your vote.
So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. How does that work? You take another vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
So the motion that's backed on the floor now is to approve the additional.
Okay.
To the vote that was ratified at executive session?
Yes.
I'd second that. I'd make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
To ratify the executive session vote with the new language.
With the slightly revised language.
Dawn had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm in favor.
All those opposed?
No. No.
Thank you for the clarification.
It was a little confusing. Okay, committee report.
And my, and again, my, my, I just, mine is partly on, on something like this. Mine is we, we made a, we made a, we made a deal for a specific reason to, to ensure that it wasn't going to be there. You know, I understand what's happened, and it's probably going to be fine. But I, you know, if we were supposed to, as, if we staff, or we as a board, or someone was supposed to negotiate with Winthrop, we should have done that two years ago. It shouldn't have, you know, this shouldn't all be a last minute, no, my God, now we have to change it. I mean, I just think it's sort of, I think the process was a little, you know, was on someone else's schedule, and I just think we have to be on top of things a little better. I feel like I wasn't on top of it. I feel like staff may not have been. So anyway, I just, we'll see how it goes.
I would echo that. It does often happen, more often than not, where some of these contractual obligations are not the diligence that is needed to basically have the information we need and the timeframe that we need it isn't there.
And we're going to see that later in our meeting, tonight.
I'm going to take a bathroom.
We'll try not to mess up anything too bad.
So we're going to move committee reports, we already did, to the, to the end of the, the meeting. Okay, so now we're on consent items, Real Estate Convenance of Nantucket Island Land Bank, A, B, and C. Any questions or comments?
Their approval?
Second?
Yeah, we need.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes 4 to 0. Is that okay for everyone? Not having Dawn there?
Yep.
Citizen Department request, we have save our sound, request for letter of support for federal legislation pertaining to the prevention of future offshore wind projects in certain areas of Nantucket Sound.
Hi, I'm Audra Parker. I'm the president of the Alliance to Protect Nantucket Sound. We're based in Hyannis, but have about 20,000 supporters and many stakeholder groups we've worked with over the past 15 years on Cape Cod, Nantucket, and Martha's Vineyard. I'm here to seek your support for a preservation effort we have underway currently, which is to get federal legislation to designate Nantucket Sound as a national historic landmark and to also seek that no federal agency can authorize or issue permits for any kind of energy generation project in the sound in the future. To give you a little bit of background, Nantucket Sound has a split jurisdiction. So out from Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, and Cape Cod, three miles, that ring is currently protected under the Massachusetts Ocean Sanctuaries Act, which prohibits large-scale development. But the center of Nantucket Sound is under federal jurisdiction and is basically open to future development. So we are, now have a draft bill in place, and we are reaching out to a number of stakeholders, including towns on Cape Cod, south facing on Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, sorry, south facing on the Cape, Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, to seek your support on a letter which basically supports that federal legislation. Thus far, we have about 40 groups on Nantucket. We have the Nantucket Chamber of Commerce that's signed on, the Nantucket Anglers Club. We have numerous requests out. And in terms of municipalities, we have, Town of Barnstable is signed on. Yes, or Town of Yarmouth voted unanimously to sign on. Mashpee, Tisbury, Edgar Town, Oak Bluffs, and request to all the other, all the other towns on the Cape and Islands. So that's my request to ask you to sign on. I think you have the letter or have seen it, you provided it.
Any questions or comments? Any vote?
Make a motion to, to sign.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
All right, next up is the CS Gonzit, it sounds weird, CS Gonzit, Beach Preservation Fund, request for sent to seek notice of a tent from Conservation Commission to, for expansion of erosion control project with use of town property. So we decided in executive session to bring this to the public in open session. So we decided executive session to bring this to the public in open session. We had, we had talked about this five different times in 2018 in executive session and we felt that it got to the point where we needed to bring it to the public for a couple of different reasons. To give an update of where we are as much as we can for, to hear from the public and to see if we are ready to take a vote on the ascent for the NOI for it to go to Conservation Commission. I know there's a lot of passion and maybe anger and interest on this subject. I just want to make sure that we continue to be professional and stay passionate, be professional and considerate of everyone tonight. If there's any questions for any, any other members, try to put it through the chair. Tonight, I like to, want to hear from the public and would like to give maybe 15 to 20 minutes, try to get people to talk, short, two to three minute spurts. If there's, needs to be another question or rebuttal from when the board is speaking, I'll allow that, but I just want to make sure that it's, that it's, a lot of us could talk about this for 60 minutes minimum at the, at the microphone. So I want to try to keep it short so everybody who's here can, we can get as many people as we can to, to speak. But want to be clear though, this is not about licensing. Anybody who's listening to this on the radio, we are here to talk about, to possibly take a vote or not on the notice of intent to allow SPPF to go to the Conservation Commission. I just want to try to be very clear on what we're here to talk about. Would the board like to make any comments?
I just wanted to further clarify because I think we did end our last meeting with a sense of wanting the conversation to be public and for there to be as much transparency as possible. That part of the, it's sort of nuanced. It's the conversation about there's certain, based on the last memorandum of understanding, there's certain contractual obligations that haven't been met and whether we would even consider discussing and discussing the NOI without those obligations being fulfilled. And I think both sides were a little caught off guard by the timing and the timeframe of needed to fulfill those obligations. But I just wanted to clarify, for me, it was whether we were, would consider, consider even discussing the NOI without those prior obligations fulfilled. And I think it is a common theme that has come up a couple of times tonight already. And, you know, I don't think that, well, I'll let everyone else speak. I just think it's something, it has been an issue, a common issue.
Yeah, we, you know, we'd heard clearly from town council that were some obligations by SPVF that had not been completed and there'd been negotiations back and forth. There'd been, you know, cabinet meetings or staff meetings with representatives and there was an outline of engineering tasks to be performed. It's gonna, was gonna take longer than, you know, than everyone realized. I understand there, there is a letter in the packet saying that there's certain agreement about certain work to be done. But for me, it was, and the reason I voted no in executive session was because of the, just, you know, on the, just the administrative process of making sure that everything's complete before we move forward. So it's not really, it wasn't for me, it wasn't, you know, a position on the NOI itself. It was really stating that we should be methodical and have, you know, conclude our obligations, both parties. And I know there were, you know, fault allowed on the town and we didn't, you know, didn't do it on a timely basis, but that doesn't preclude the obligation to make sure that's all done, so.
Also, I meant before I said anything, before I take action, I wanted to repeat that I filed a disclosure and it's with the town clerk about the engagement that I'd had with Coastal Conservancy prior to 2016. So it's there and it can ensure everyone it doesn't impact my decision, any of my decisions or reasoning behind my decisions. In the context of open meeting law.
I should disclose.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, the vote that was taken in executive session was just whether to bring this into open session tonight or not. And it was, it was split. And the, the piece, the contractual piece that wasn't done quite to our satisfaction was having the fully engineered shovel-ready plans for the alternative access, which was part of the agreement. And it, what has been signed is an agreement to have that all done and delivered by September 30th with the understanding that if an NOI was granted, the, or the ascent to an NOI was granted, that if that obligation was not met, then NOI would be withdrawn. Is what the current proposal is.
I think that's, my concern is that is putting us right back in the position where we are unclear and inconsistent with how we deal with contractual obligations. And people expect that, that we will be lenient or that we don't really mean what we say in these contracts by saying, you know, if you get it done by then, we'll give you this first. I just, I, I think, which is why I voted against bringing this here, although I believe in the transparency of the conversation. To me, this is where it is a hard line of, these are the obligations that we agreed to 2015 and we should meet those. And I think both sides have an element of accountability for not having the diligence to have been discussing this a year ago, but pushing it forward without meeting those obligations, to me, doesn't answer, doesn't fix the problem. And I think it continues, it perpetuates inconsistency and being unclear and the idea that we will, that, you know, we'll be kind because there's been a timing issue.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak on this? I, you know, I think, I have to take some exception with the characterization of a failure to meet an obligation. And I don't think that there was any failure by SPF or frankly by the town. I think that looking back three years by, by people who weren't involved to say, hey, do we have everything that we want? And saying, no, we don't, and we legally have the right to ask for more is a little different than saying, hey, the ball got dropped and people didn't satisfy their obligations. And so I just really want to make clear for the public record that actually a tremendous amount of time and effort and money and goodwill was put into developing the alternative access agreement and a plan and agreement and legal agreements were signed and prepared, you know, actually far in excess of the obligation that is required if you go back and read the agreement. The, and those agreements that were signed and prepared and delivered to the town actually will save the town a ton of time and money in other ways. However, the engineering to follow through on the development of that road, which will take a couple of months, was, was not done. And if that is something that the town wants, SPF has already signed the contract to have that delivered and it'll, it'll take a couple of months and it'll be delivered. So, you know, the suggestion that people didn't, people who didn't do what they said they were gonna do were asking for more or any characterization remotely close to that, or even frankly that the town staff dropped the ball, I think is, is an unfair characterization. And if that's not what you're saying, then fine. But I really don't want it out there for the public who is not involved in all the details on this to think that either the town or the neighbors didn't do the right thing. At the time, when all that work was put in, everybody felt like, wow, what an accomplishment, we got a lot done. Nobody thought, we did half, let's break. You know, so, you know, the, the retroactive look back of, hey, did we get everything we really want now? Turned out, hey, what we really needed is some engineering and that's being delivered. But there was never, there was never a request for it or a desire for it that was, that was ignored or abandoned. So I would say that SPF delivered more than it was supposed to and the town did a diligent job and that now, looking back, the town has figured out, hey, we could actually use a little more and I see a hook to get SPF to pay for it, so let's get it. And that, like I said, will be delivered in a couple of months.
I just, and I actually appreciate that because if it came across, I think the wording is important and it's not so much to me that it's a failure to an obligation. To me, it seems like there was a lack of clarity. And again, having this discussion six months ago or at this stage, 10 months ago, would have been ideal. I don't, I don't think it was intentional, but I do think there was a lack of clarity. And for myself, coming in when I came into this, reading through the agreement, to me, it was fairly clear that there was this alternative access plan. I don't feel that it was, oh, by the way, and we need this. To me, it read fairly clearly that this was an obligation. And I do appreciate the work and the effort that has gone into all the other requirements, the monitoring and, and you're meeting the obligations that were clear that you had to meet. So I don't want it to be painted as a failure to meet the obligations or anything intentional, but I do think there was a lack of clarity. And it could have been rectified if we had brought this up before the deadline of January 2018.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with you that taking some time off and taking a fresh look and thinking, what do we want now and do we have it, was a good exercise because it revealed the fact that there was a survey plan and not an engineered road plan and that's one more step that's needed. And like you said, it's, it's being contracted for and it'll be delivered soon. Thank you.
Well, how are you gonna do this? Are you gonna ask the public for their comments or what's the?
If there's no public comment, then we can keep discussing and we can take a motion or not. Or if we feel ready, or we can, you know, we can table it, we can, there's lots of different decisions.
Right.
I like how it's going so far. We're all talking, arguing our opinion on.
Well, yeah, I think that, I think, and I was involved in the negotiations and I, and I think, and I think that it's, looking at it now, the negotiations in my mind, it was, it was, we were facing a larger potentially rock revetment with, you know, and the island did not want that. This was proposed, a smaller test was proposed, which was agreed upon and which has had, what, three, four years?
Yep, some part of it's been there five years.
Right, so, which was agreed upon. If in, you know, if in that period or in some future period, it fails, and there's a bunch of criteria for that, if in some current period or future period it fails, we have the, you know, the CONCOM can say it's failed and we can remove it. And, you know, so, and, and part of that negotiation was the understanding that at this period, they would be, you know, SPF would, we would have three years of data and they would be allowed to apply for a further extension. At that point, you know, so, and that was, you know, that was a negotiation. And, you know, quite honest, they were not happy with that date and some people didn't want it for 10 years. And that was what we ended up on. You know, but if in fact, you know, it goes to CONCOM and it's the worst thing ever and it's harming other beaches and it's the end of the world, then I would hope that we would say no to it. And that would come back to us and we wouldn't license it. But I think that they should have the opportunity to go, you know, go and fulfill. At least I would like, as one member who gave my word four years ago, I would like to keep my word now to let them go and have that review. And, you know, if I find that that review is, is wrong, that, you know, if there's something that really bad that we haven't thought about, if there's changes we have to make, then, you know, we can change, deal with some of that in the licensing. I think there's things that we have learned, sort of like this last issue. I think there's some other things that, you know, that we would want to potentially discuss in a license. But I think that there's, you know, to not be in this situation again or if we do find it fails in 15 years or 10 years, that we have a way to safely retreat, you know, and, and that we aren't fighting over who's gonna do the roads, et cetera. I think those are issues that are gonna be very difficult in another license agreement that are gonna have to be hammered out. But I think the first step is, you know, having it evaluated at the CONCOM level. And I would, and I would feel, I don't think there's anything that's happened that would cause me to say they shouldn't go there at all. And that's just as one person who was involved on the committee that made the, you know, the very difficult decision to, you know, to be where we are, so.
And that is the part of it. Matt was here and others were here and we have come into this and are learning and need to somewhat look to what's been done before us and what's, what, um, what's been, already been agreed upon. But we've had, we have had extensive conversations as well, hence our numerous executive sessions about what may or may not be in a license, which would, if we were to vote to grant the NOI, that does in no way obligate us to grant a license or to not, not discuss significant provisions in a license.
So Matt, you're okay, you would be okay with going forward with an ascent with recommendations of making sure that this access gets done by a certain time? Being, being contingent on that?
Yeah, man, and I think that's, you know, that's, that, that is, that issue I think has, how do I say it? Yeah, I'm not finding my words on that. That, that, to me, there's other issues that I think are bigger than that. That access is very important. It was part of what we were worried about back then was, what, you know, how are we gonna access that part of that, that road? You know, if we, if it broke through where it looked like it was going to, how would we access? How would people be able to walk up to the light house anymore? And so that's what we were sort of, and that was very difficult. And to be completely honest, there were a couple homeowners who, you know, we had, who, we didn't have to, you know, you had to convince them that, you know, to have a road pass right between their properties, right next to their houses. And they agree, you know, and they thank you very much and they agreed to do that, you know, as part of this negotiation. It was not easy. And, you know, and that is all laid out, so if that has to happen, it can happen. You know, we had, we had the golf club come and, and have engineers and, you know, did calculus and show us how, you know, it couldn't go within so many feet of a swing and everything else, which, you know, they basically, what they really had to say was we need to move the road over a little bit, you know, with the calculus and some of the other stuff was a little unnecessary. But I think that's, you know, so we had, there wasn't, this was, you know, this took up a lot of time a few years ago. So, and I think some of that should hold sway now. Now, if it, but what I don't want to see happen is I don't want to see, if it goes to CONCOM and they are absolutely opposed to it, I don't think that we as a board should be fighting with CONCOM. You know, I think that's, that's our, you know, I just think that would be a mistake. We shouldn't be in opposition to them and I don't think it's our, in our documents that we didn't have, that we wrote, said that CONCOM had the final say on this, on the performance of this and the oversight of this. That wasn't our board's, you know, jurisdiction, even in those documents.
Are we gonna hear from others? I got no one standing up, so I guess that means.
Rick and then Corvax.
Yeah, my name's Rick Atherton and I participated with Matt in virtually all the discussions related to this issue. And I have a couple of things tonight, but I want to just say one thing upfront. I think we all need to understand what is likely to happen if you do ascent and sign on as a property owner. It's clear to me, everything that happened before could happen again. The CONCOM denied the project twice and it didn't make any difference at all because they just appealed to the state and that will happen again. Once you start this process and the license has not been negotiated, it's been put off because counsel likes to tell you, you can always do it later. No problem. You, you know, and if you don't put a condition in this, let's be really frank, that they could apply, but they cannot appeal a negative decision by our CONCOM, if you don't put that in, then they are gonna get approval. The state has clearly made sure that's what's gonna happen. So you're really voting to put in a mile, virtually a mile of geotubes on a public beach with all the consequences because once you start, you're not gonna be able to stop it.
Mr. Chairman. Stephen Cohen, I represent SPF. Let me, let me give a little bit of background here and then I'd like to address Mr. Atherton's point, which is that, you know, in 2013, we came back from one of the worst storm seasons ever where properties that had existing erosion protection that had been permitted by the CONCOM were losing 20, 30, 40 feet of bluff in front of them. And this board voted to jointly go with the SPF to apply to the CONCOM for a 4,000-foot rock remevement. And that went through months and months and months of permitting and then we quickly realized, wait, we're gonna lose the road while we go through this permitting. And so we had a concurrent application for 900 feet of geotubes just to deal with the portion of the road that was the most endangered. We then went, came back and said, okay, well, let's try applying for just 4,000 feet of geotubes because as we've gone through this process, we figured out that maybe they're better in some ways because they're removable. And that 4,000-foot application was. And that 4,000-foot application was put forward, but then the 900-foot application was approved by an emergency permit and brought back to the town. The appeals that were filed, the state were approved by the state. But what's important to understand is that when the Concom issues a permit, it's actually issuing both a state and a local permit. And so only the state, the state can't shove it down your throat. They can only issue a superseding order of conditions on the state portion of the permit. And so the state portion was appealed, a bunch of legal questions were answered in that state permit and it was brought back to the Conservation Commission. And it is the Nantucket Conservation Commission, not the state, that issued the permit that approves what's existing there today. And anybody who tells you otherwise should go back and look at the permit that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, issued by the Nantucket Conservation Commission after the appeal was sent back down here. It is the local permit that currently exists. No one forced anything. The state only answered legal questions that the Concom, we think, got wrong. But that's, that, that's fine. The Concom, it was a very difficult issue. There were a lot of novel issues, there were a lot of issues they weren't used to. And that's, and they wanted, you know, people wanted to see what does the state have to say on some of these things. But the permit that's issued is a local permit. It was a compromise between the Board of Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, and SPPF that resulted in that permit being only for 900 feet instead of the 4,000 feet. But it wasn't for the emergency permit, construction. The emergency permit construction was only for three tiers of geotubes and the Concom approved going to the full four-tier height in its locally issued permit. But the compromise was, okay, you can go to the full four-tier design, but don't go the full length. Let's wait and test that. It's been, the three tiers was in place for two storm seasons and we went to another three seasons for the full four tiers with all this mitigation in place and all of this data collection in place, with the idea and with the agreement that we would test the 952 feet that's there and then come back in three years with those lessons learned to go back and apply for what we're applying now. Yeah. Sure. So the only question in front of you is, should we stick to the agreement that was agreed to of letting the Concom now go back and review the full application in light of all of the information that we have and make any adjustments that, that should be made based on information? And those could be positive or negative information that's been learned. And, you know, this board is not legally required to do anything and the Concom is not legally required to do anything except stuff they're already legally required to do. You're not voting tonight to let the horses out and you can never get them back. You don't have to sign a license later. You can put whatever conditions you want in its place. And if the Concom has to issue a permit, it's because the law says so, not because the state says so, not because I say so, not because you say so. Nobody, nobody can force the Concom to do anything. What they really should do is be left alone without any rules in place except those that already exist to make a fair and unprejudiced decision, not one with a Damocles axe hanging above, oh, well, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know, whatever. Let them operate in their professional and legal capacity. And that's what I'd like you to do tonight. I'd like to have a request that you vote to authorize the notice of intent to go forward so the Concom can do their job. And then if they issue a permit, you would then have the ability to review that permit and say, okay, we like it or we don't like it and we're willing to give a license for it or we're willing to, we want to add these conditions to it. And that as the owner of the land is something you should do once you know what you're being asked to review, which at the moment you don't because there's no permit for it. So that's, that's my request, to authorize the Concom to do its job with the idea that we all come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cormac? Oh, sorry. One thing, I, I do want to note, there's a number of people from Scottsdale in the room and a number of people who left because they've been sitting here for several hours and unfortunately, didn't make it this late in the meeting.
Okay, we'll go to Cormac next. You've been waiting.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Cormac Collier, Executive Director for the Nantucket Land Council. As you know, we do most of our work before the Conservation Commission and really will hold all of our review and comments before then, if and when it does get there. But I do want to reiterate something that I did say a few months ago, and it actually is even more pertinent with the comments from Mr. Fee, and that if the Concom does deny it both under the state and local law, Mr. Fee was just basically said that then we would want to support our Conservation, Conservation Commission and not issue a license. Well, unfortunately, what will happen is, as they have said, that they will most likely appeal that decision under the state and the local, bring it to the Nantucket Superior Court. The town's going to be spending unnecessary money defending the Conservation Commission's denial if you don't issue out some sort of condition that they give up their appellate rights. It just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense for me if you go down, if you want to support your Conservation Commission, as I do, if they issue something very thoroughly, which what the council does, why would you then open up the door to an appeal that the town would then have to spend public money to defend? It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If you want to think through that as it relates to a public benefit, public resources, I understand that, but there's a little bit more conversation should happen on that end. Maybe it already has an executive session. I imagine you guys probably went over it five meetings, but again, I just wanted to make that report, that point. And as you know, we hold all of our stuff for the Conservation Commission scientific review, which shouldn't be before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to address Amos Hostetter at 53 Baxter Road. I'd like to address both some comments that Mr. Atherton made and some comments that Cormac made. I was one of four people who are here tonight who was involved in that 2013 negotiation. And it was Rick, and it was Matt, and it was Josh and myself. And we, we had been in court for two years with an appeal to the Concom, a decision by the Concom, and a threatened appeal of the decision by the Concom. And we all decided this was not money being well-spent. There ought to be a way to find common ground here. We sat for two different meetings and at the end of those meetings, we decided we would rather defer pushing this thing for another three years, which would provide a total of five years of testing of this barrier, on the understanding that if, at the end of that period, the Concom decided this system had worked, that we would be allowed to go forward. So we traded three more years of damage to a bluff that was very, very vulnerable without protection for the assurance that after the end of that period, we would be welcome to come back to Concom, which was January of this past year. That was a deal I made, that was a deal Matt made, that was a deal Josh made. And Rick, that was a deal you made. There were no objections, there were no minority dissents or anything else to that report. So I would say to you, the simple equities here are pretty darn clear, which is a deal was made with that group. I understand that it's taken now seven months to get the new members of this board up to speed on this, but those are the fundamentals of the deal. Now, as to Cormac's comment, that the board should do this on a condition that we forego any right to appeal if the Concom denies this, is out of some science fiction movie. I mean, no one is going to do that. Our judicial system is what our judicial system is. If the Concom feels they were mistreated, they have a right to appeal. If we feel we were mistreated, we have a right to appeal. And no one going into a situation like this is well-advised to in advance waive a right to appeal. So I would say for a land council that has nominally declared that they are a noncombatant in this process, to come forward at this point in the process and say, let's add a little provision that Scottsdale Bluff people will not appeal if they lose at Concom, is absolutely an unacceptable provision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judith.
My name's Judith Wegner. I live at 50 Quinnett Road. I'm also a member of the Planning Board, but I'm not here in any way on behalf of the Planning Board or in that capacity. I'm here as our council told us earlier today that if you're going to be in front of y'all, we have to tell you who we're speaking for. I'm speaking just for myself. You've heard me speak previously, you know my background as a retired law professor with expertise in this field, although not everybody believes I have that expertise apparently. I've done more work on this, the historic research I brought to you previously, tried to pursue that more, but I have three main points because there's limited time. First thing, I think you have to be careful about using the framework of contract when you're engaged in regulatory activity. There's times in which if you're engaged in partnerships between public and private parties, that can make sense in my mind, but as far as the public at large or I myself am concerned, I look at this as really a question of protecting the environment here, natural resources. And I think you really have to be aware of that. I don't think that passports can constrain future boards in perpetuity in some way about doing their obligations about their police power oversight. So I would just urge you to think closely about all that. If indeed you decide you're going to enter into what amounts to a public-private partnership, I think the citizens deserve to have better and fuller information about who the private partner is. I know this is an organization that has been created, I think the last time I looked it up, it has some sort of federal charitable tax status. I'd like to know, based on my own work historically on things like homeowners associations that last for a while and then go away, or I'd like to know too, with tax law changes, who we're dealing with down the road, if this is going to be some kind of a in perpetuity mile-long geotube complex. I think the citizens need to know what the backup is about that because as we know, with changes in the economy, ownership and things of that sort, if you are going to be dealing with the partner, you really owe it to everybody to be very clear about that. Last thing I want to say is we have Article 97 of the state constitution and I think that you need to take that into account. I'm not sure whether that was taken adequately into account when you dealt with this previously. But I've continued my researches to Mr. Fee. I've now found the old documents out of Parliament and otherwise about how New York gave up its claim on Nantucket lands and Matthews, it's took over and how that all worked. But it's a long haul to be going from 1692 up to the present, so forgive me if I've not fully gotten there. But what I do have to offer you tonight, and I'll send it on to Erica to be distributed, is a reference to a deed recorded in Book 102, page 119 of our Register of Deeds dated May 1, 1925. And that has to do with the bluff, not the part that is on the water, but the path. Very explicit about that. And if anybody doubts that there really was an intent clearly to create a trust here, I think you really should be reviewing this document closely because it said, referencing the bluff, that the proprietors, I mean, I'm going to just read it to you here. Referencing lots A and B on a plan entitled Land at Scottsdale, Nantucket, the path surveyed for the town of Nantucket, September 22, 1924, giving the name of the engineer who was involved in that, said that this was going to pass said land to the inhabitants of the town of Nantucket and their successors on the same trust as is contained in the flag deed. That's the same flag deed in a separate provision of which the beach easement was created on behalf of the public for the purpose of a way or footpath along the lands and for no other purpose or purposes whatsoever. And said land or any interest in the same is not to be deeded away by said town to any person or persons whatsoever. This release has given upon the following conditions, that said inhabitants of the town of Nantucket shall cause said land to be registered in the land court or so much of the land as the land court finds entitled to registration within a reasonable time. But in any event, to complete the registration within five years from the date or else that land shall revert to said proprietors. I don't know what would be a clear indication of a serious intent to create public trust. Now, that specific reference is to the bluff path, not to the easement on the ground at the beach. However, when the deed and the plat related to it were originally created by Mr. Flag and the proprietors, that right did not extend over the bluff. It was very clear on the map there that he was aware in creating that deed and the proprietors were to not to be giving rights that would extend up to the edge of the bluff, but to try to set up rights on the area of the land above, not affecting what was going to be going on down next to the ocean. And the provisions of that original protection, that public easement in the beach are something you're bound to protect. You really owe that to the public. You, we owe it to the future. I understand people living there don't want to lose their land, but they're in a situation where this is a public resource that you all are holding in trust on behalf of the inhabitants. In my personal opinion, I think a group of citizens, if there's any doubt about this, should go about bringing an action in court to try to get an interpretation of the state constitution to provide that. Ideally, I would urge you all to do that before you go ahead and let things move ahead further because if you don't, you're looking at potential claims that you should be reimbursing property owners later by virtue of some kind of delay brought about by people in litigation with you. So I just ask you sincerely and only personally, not in any other capacity, not to sell out that birthright. Thank you.
Take it, Judith. Josh?
I want to just make two points without repeating too much of what's already come before. And I don't want to get into this whole discussion that Ms. Wegner has brought up. I heard that, we heard that three or four months ago, and I think it was referred to town council and the lawyers kicked that around for a while already. Tonight, I think we've got something that is fairly simple to decide. Are you ready to send this to the Conservation Commission? As Amos Hostetter described, we had a whole process where we tried in 2015, three years ago, to come up with a way forward on a project that was tied up in court with all kinds of legal fees getting spent. And we did come together around a good faith agreement on how to move. We agreed to wait until January of 2018 to request the expansion of the project, which we always needed and always have talked about. That gave the town a total of five storm seasons of data to decide whether the project was working or not. When we came in January to ask for the notice of intent to be signed in accordance with that good faith agreement, new members of the select board said, we've got a lot of questions, there's a lot that we don't know about all of this. And so we've now spent the last seven months in many meetings, answering every question that you've had to the best of our ability. Now, it appears that in the process of that, in the last month, the town has requested some additional engineering work relating to the alternative access. I feel very strongly that we asked at various points over the last three years whether there was anything else we were supposed to be doing in accordance to that, with that alternative access. And I'm quite sure everybody agreed that we'd done what we said we were going to do, which was more than we promised. When we said we were going to try to get an alternative access route, we couldn't promise that we would be able to deliver. It was a tremendous effort to bring this community together and make voluntary agreements that, that, that would result in the town not having to go through a contentious, confrontational, difficult, expensive, eminent domain process to create an alternative access in a hostile environment. We delivered that. That was part of our MOU going back five years ago. Now, it's been decided in the last, the first I heard of the idea that there were some engineering that we needed, that you wanted us to do that hadn't been done, was a month ago. We, we're not arguing over whether we should have had to do it or not, whether we should have had to do it in accordance to that agreement. We said, okay, fine. We said, okay, fine, we'll do it. And we have contracted for doing it, there's a date certain when it will be delivered. The decision tonight is really pretty simple. Have you, after six or seven months of further investigation into this project, is it working? Is it hurting anybody else? Are we in compliance with our permits? Are you ready to send this to the Conservation Commission as it was described in the good faith agreement that we entered into three years ago? That's the question before this group. And we have still probably 25 people, 20 people from Sconset, raise your hands, who are here, who have been doing everything that we've been asked to do, spending hundreds and hundreds, millions of dollars protecting this road, protecting access to the Sanctity Lighthouse in the face of nonstop opposition from a passionate principled group that doesn't want this to happen. They've done everything that they can do to oppose it, and they have every right to do that. But at a certain point, it's time to stop going around and around and around and to start moving forward. That's what's had to happen at various points over the last five years, and that's what needs to happen again tonight. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, and you may rule this out of order, but I'd like to make a motion. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the ascent to seek notice of intent from the Conservation Commission for expansion of the erosion control project with use of town property. I've spent the last seven months, and you know, I won't debate some of the comments I've heard, but you know, I've come to the conclusion that I'm ready to support sending this forward, so I would make that motion for discussion.
Second for discussion?
Second for discussion. We've got public that still wants to talk.
Yeah. There's somebody else right before you started that. Would you like, would it be okay if we, during your motion, would it be okay if we?
No, it's been seconded for discussion, so.
But this public comment, I don't mind if this public comment, after.
No, of course not, no. I mean.
Please.
My name is Barbara Bund. I'm with the Conservation Commission, and I want to remind you of something that happened at your earlier meetings this spring. Jeff Carlson from the Conservation Commission stood up there and told you that there were issues about sand and that the CONCON cannot deal with those issues about sand. And I presented some numbers to you based on assumptions that I tried to make as favorable to the Sconset property owners as I could because I was trying to get a common argument. And they showed how much sand was going to be needed for an extension, let alone for the current installation, and used estimates from their consultants about how much sand there is in the two pits on the island, and showed that, you have these numbers, I haven't brought them with me again tonight, but I put them in the record this spring, and showed that within a few years, if sand was needed for nothing else, this project would exhaust the supplies in those two pits. No construction, no town use, and so on. One of the meetings this spring, the head of SBPF said that they were exploring other options for getting sand. I mentioned a few, and I shouldn't be saying what he exactly mentioned. I think there was talk of off-island and dredging, but whatever. Seems to me that before you go ahead with something that is going to use up our sand, and the CONCON cannot consider that, that's what Jeff told you, I think you really need to consider where's the sand going to come from. If they're looking at options, they shouldn't be ready to go ahead. They should have those options clear, explained to all of us. And you also ought to look at what that's going to do with prices, what it's going to do to town uses of sand, to construction uses of sand. And the other thing that we mentioned in the spring is with, I think they're now on the order of 1,000 truckloads a year that go out there, and there will be many more, what happens to the cost for the roads? So the idea that people have been spreading that this isn't going to cost the town anything, it's going to cost other people in business on this island because of the sand, it's going to cost the town to make those roads, and the CONCON can't look at you. So I would really like to see you look at those issues in your job as being responsible for all of us before you give them a green light, which at least in some people's view is going to lead to the state and lead to an approval.
Thank you, Dawn.
I think we've done that.
I was just going to say that we have started that discussion, gone through a lot of that discussion, and it would certainly be a very serious consideration into any licensing.
Yep. We've got a lot of data on number of, you know, number of loads, you know, so it's, I've seen the truckload numbers and the wheel, you know, the size of the axles and those kinds of things, so that's pretty well defined and we're assessing that.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, I feel there's, again, there's sort of two layers to this. One is the, are we ready to put it to, to vote on the NOI without those obligations, regardless of how they were missed to date? Are we ready to push it forward without those obligations being fulfilled? And again, my answer to that is absolutely not because I think it is perpetuating what is becoming a consistent approach to contractual obligations where we haven't gone through them in enough time to make sure that everyone understands exactly what needs to be done and when. So that's my feeling on what we're discussing today. September 30th or October 1st, that would be different because the contractual obligations have been fulfilled, and I think it's important to set the foundation or start again and cultivate this relationship in the way it should be cultivated, where it's clear. So I don't think that has been fulfilled at all. Secondly, there's a couple of things that just make me uneasy, and I'll bring them up now. I think, you know, we have had many discussions, and I think board members know exactly where I stand on when I would be ready to consider an NOI. And the honest truth is that I feel this is a policy decision. I think sending it to CONCON is pretending that this is a site-specific ecological problem. This is an island issue, and this project needs to be looked at in the context of how we're going to approach coastal erosion, sea level rise across the community. And we need to be able to look at the various projects, look at our vulnerabilities, estimate the costs and the inputs and the logistics, and they need to be vetted and prioritized, one against the other. This is, they're ahead of the curve, they have the money to be able to push this to the forefront, but that's not, to me, that's not good policy. And I think it is the onus of the board to understand when it is a policy issue and step back and say, we need to look at this in the context of the bigger picture. So for me, and that's not what anyone wants to hear, but that's when I would be ready for the NOI. So there isn't a timeframe on that now, we have a coastal resiliency plan underway. But a couple of things that have made me uneasy, one is this, I think it's very unfortunate that this good faith agreement was made, I think the outcome was what we wanted, but this is why good faith agreements that are not legally binding are not made. Frankly, I think they're inappropriate because one side is vulnerable to their expectations not being met, and unfortunately, it's SBPF. It was not legally binding, and I don't feel compelled legally or otherwise to be beholden to that decision. And again, I think it's unfortunate, but it's an inappropriate way to make, to come to an agreement and then expect the board to stick to that. I'm very uneasy by the sense of sort of a fait accompli, that they get the NOI, the ascent to the NOI, it goes to CONCON, if CONCON doesn't approve it, it'll get appealed. And again, it's setting up policy that is being driven by political pull, connections and money, and I just don't think that, whether that's the way of the world, I'm not ready to concede that that is how we're going to let our policy decisions be driven. I also am uneasy with this idea that if we don't like them, we can just take them out. I think it's very flippant, and I think it's flawed thinking because really and truly, if we don't like them, we're not going to like them, maybe they haven't worked, maybe Baxter Road isn't being protected anymore. But if we don't like them because they're having a negative environmental impact, you can't pay to fix that, you cannot pay to fix that. That's 30 years plus to repair. So the idea that, flippantly, that we can just take them out and everything's good is wrong. It's flawed, and I don't think that we should be treating our natural resources so flippantly. And I think there may be a time where we decide, the town, the community decides that we are going to hard armor, and when we make that decision to hard armor, everyone needs to understand the damages that are going to happen. And then again, I think this is just out of order in that it needs to be looked at in the context and really understand what those consequences are. And I think unfortunately, again, that this five-year timeframe, I really appreciate all the emails that we've gotten from Sconset, and I think they made some good points, but I think that while it has protected the road, which is a positive, the idea that we understand the impacts in five years, again, is flawed. The systems do not work in five-year increments, we won't see the damage or negative or any understand the impact for more than five years. So that's, and the last one, and this has come up, and it sort of was reinforced by the open meeting law conversation, if you feel uneasy about something, there's a reason. The fact that this is not going to town meeting in some way, shape or form, to me, I feel very uneasy about that. And I don't mean it to be a, should we, do we like SBPS project or not? I don't think that's what it is. To me, this, again, this is a broad, much broader conversation with the community about what we are going to do about coastal erosion and the approach we're going to take when private property is involved and there's a public-private partnership, and that could apply to SBPF, it could apply to Maticket, it could apply to any of the areas that are going to be impacted in the near future. So I feel uneasy that this is not going to town meeting in some way, shape or form. So those are my comments, and some old, some new.
Are you ready for a vote?
I have a quick, just another.
I, sorry, actually, while, if there's someone else as well, while we're waiting for someone to.
And I wanted to ask to John, what is the, there was a comment tonight about Article 97. Does that apply, have we discussed that? I don't recall that we have, and does that apply here? You've probably read what Rick sent us earlier today.
Well, I've been a little bit busy today, to be honest with you.
I asked Libby to sit in town council, we've got to review it.
So, yes, of course, we're familiar with Article 97, and we have looked at it with respect to this project. And we will be, I think Jim has requested it, we will be providing the board with our view. It's important to understand, however, that the issue of whether Article 97 is triggered doesn't occur when the board agrees to let the application go forward. It would only be relevant when and if the board entered into some legal agreement that granted them permission to use the property. Now.
So that would be, if we licensed it?
Correct.
And then we licensed something we shouldn't have licensed, that's when it would come into effect.
Well, so Article 97, I mean, if you were contemplating granting an easement, which would require town meeting approval, and it would trigger Article 97, there's no question about that. We're talking here, and what the discussion has been, is a license agreement. And I believe the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs has indicated, and their job is to interpret and enforce Article 97, that a license agreement does not trigger Article 97. So that's sort of the Cliff Dote's version, but it would definitely be an issue if the board was contemplating or SBPF requested a permanent easement, because that is a disposition of an interest in land, and that would require the legislative vote. But that's not what we've been discussing.
Thank you.
Rick?
Again, my name's Rick Atherton. Just to pick up on the Article 97 issue, I did prepare what I'll call Rick's understanding of the public information available about Article 97. And I came to look at that before the spring, in the land bank situation, I didn't know Article 97 of the state constitution even existed. It was not a matter of discussion that I recall before the board when the use of the town beach in Sconset was being discussed. I don't think it, I understand what town council just said. I think there are issues about Article 97, which is intended to conserve conservation and recreation land within the Commonwealth, and any change in use or sale of that type of land needs the vote by the roll call of two-thirds of the state, both houses of the state legislature. And I went through and tried to find some legal cases related to this, and one of the important distinctions the Massachusetts Supreme Court made was that the ultimate test of whether 97 should apply is the use of the land. It seems to me it's clear in this case that this is public land, it's meant to be a beach and conservation land all along. And I think when we're using four acres of conservation land here, it should require a vote of the owners of the property. That's town meeting, it's not six of you or five of you trying to, you know, I shouldn't say it quite so pejoratively, but when you're using a license, it's clear to me that use of a license is intended to get around going to the voters of the town who own the property. This is meant to be a permanent installation, it's not meant to be short-term, it's meant to be there forever. And while it's not technically the sale of the property, it in effect substantively is a permanent use of the property by a private, a private party. And I think any such kind of transaction ought to be voted upon by the citizens of Nantucket who own the property. And that's really the conclusion I came to about, after I went through all that I did to understand about Article 97. And I just thought Beaton's letter to the land bank was somewhat instructive. He, you know, he won't even approve without some more action to build a dormitory on a parking lot because of Article 97. And here we're talking about not a parking lot, but a public beach owned by the citizens of Nantucket, and I think you'd be well advised to take the matter to town meeting in some fashion. If you don't choose to do that voluntarily, I think we all know it's not very hard to get it there by the petition room if it's necessary. Hopefully, that's not necessary because I think it's in your own best interest, sitting selectmen representing the citizens to make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I look forward hopefully to a positive vote in which the Conservation Commission could decide whether or not to issue such a permit and under what condition those permits would exist. And I would like to point out that the benefit of this permit, if it's granted, and the sand that would be used for it, is that it actually saves the public beach from the erosion that would otherwise cause the public beach to go underwater. So I look forward to my grandchildren being able to go on this beach because it is preserved essentially by this permit, and I'd ask you to vote to allow the CONCON to consider making that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Just one more comment on that note, is that I think that, looking at what we have learned, using this as an experiment to see what do the geo-tubes do, how does it work on Nantucket? Again, I think the environmental impacts are unknown, did it save the road or support the road? Yes. But I think that what I have really learned, and I think it's very sobering, is that geo-tubes with this constant sand mitigation is incredibly expensive, and I don't think we do have, we don't have an answer as to, is it even feasible to consider to continue to do this long term? And so, again, I just, that's the one thing I have learned, which again, brings me back to not being ready to hand this over to CONCON at all because we haven't answered, we don't even come close to that.
Well, why I think it's a better option is because if we had put rocks, if rocks had have been approved there, rocks would require similar sand mitigation, you know, that's what they're doing now at the state level. If the money ran out and they didn't do it any longer, we'd be stuck with a bunch of rocks that were being undermined and buried in the sand, and we'd not know what to do with it. If in fact something happens and, you know, and it falls apart and they don't take care of it anymore, you can go with a crane and take. of it anymore, you can go with a crane and take this out. And, you know, and they haven't been taken out of very many places, but they have been taken out in at least one that we've read about. And so that's where I think there's a difference between the option that we were facing five, four years ago, and the option we have now. And I think that this option is something that we could remove if we had to. So, so I think that's, in my mind, that was a better choice. And I understand your concerns, and I understand the concerns on the, on the sand, I understand the wear and tear on the roads, I understand a lot of, you know, the costs that the town is facing and the homeowners are facing. There's a lot, this is very complicated. But, you know, but the, you know, and so the algebra that I've come up with, I'm uneasy with, but I'm comfortable going forward, at least to see at this point.
I'm concerned about all of the things that have been raised. I don't feel adequately prepared or that things are in place for the alternative. I feel like we, that we need the alternative access ready. I feel like, you know, that this is not permanently sustainable as a project, but, I mean, I may be wrong in that, but that we, we need to know what we're doing, we need to plan for retreat, and we need to have that stuff in place if that's the eventual outcome. And we don't have that yet.
You know, and I think for me, not that we're just need to debate all of our, but, you know, I was very, you know, I strongly believe that we need the coastal resiliency plan. And, but I think I was also swayed by arguments that Don and others, which is, you know, we have to have that, you know, this, you know, the engineered plans for the secondary roads. And we really currently don't have a good alternative. So I was also swayed by the recommendation from town management, town administration too. So it's a, it's been probably the hardest decision I've made since I've been here. But, so I'll learn along the way and hope it works. I would, I would say, and I hesitated to say this, but the, I would say the level of rancor on the part of some of the representatives, and as noted of your, of Sconset Bluff, is noted in numerous emails that are public. I hope that stops because it adds a level of conflict that we don't need. So, and I'd be happy to share with any of you the emails that I'm referring to. Thank you.
You know, this is not a recreational--
You missed that discussion.
Right, boom, sorry. Karen Warner, I'm a resident. I'm also a co-owner of that beach. I'm a co-owner. I'm a co-owner of that beach. And I don't, I, you're elected officials who are going to give away that beach. And I understand it's for, for people who have their homes up there, but there was a, this was set up years ago, thousands of years ago, whatever, that there were two lots that people could move there. I understand that we're losing potentially a bluff, but we're going to lose a beach when you hard armor there, and that's my beach. That's the beach of all the people who live on this island. And I am, I am sorry that Mother Nature is, she can be a wench.
Have you ever walked on it?
I have, I have. And it's remarkable. And you know what? It's not going to be there. We call it, you call it Sconset Bluff preservation? It's actually Sconset, you say it's the beach preservation, but what you're doing there is destroying the beach, not the bluff. It's, both is happening here.
Let's talk to--
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, but when you, when you hard armor there, you're going after the beach to potentially protect a bluff. You're ruining the beach. So this is actually Sconset Bluff preservation, it's not Sconset Beach. That's my beach. And I beg you not to give it away, not to, not to sell it off. That's my beach. Just say no, really, or turn it over to the people of Nantucket and let them vote on it. Because we elected you, all of us elected you. Don't give our beach away, please.
Thank you. Is no one else from the public? Deanna?
I'm Deanna Atherton, and my birthday is August 1st, just as Mariah Mitchell's is. I'm not going to be 200, I'm feeling like I am. I had some talking points, Erica, I don't know if you can bring them up or not. We're not going to do that, all right? Well, I have them here. I think, so let me make a couple of points. One is, our focus is the same as it's been since we were founded in 2012, and that's the beach. And you've heard people speak about the beach. That is a public beach, it's a legacy from the proprietors. It was conveyed to the town, and you have a trust that, that trust is yours. As you know, we had a non-binding ballot question this spring. We didn't campaign for it. We achieved almost 80% positive response. The voters want you to preserve Nantucket's beaches. Not, we, we worked on that wording, you remember how we worked on that wording. It wasn't just the public beaches, it was all the beaches. And here we're talking about public beach. It seems like the intent of the voters is very clear. We sat through months and months of public hearing before the Conservation Commission. Our Conservation Commission has already determined that there are reasonable alternatives and that the geotubes' costs have harmful impacts. They carefully constructed, finally, a supers, the state issued a superseding order, and the local Conservation Commission issued the order of conditions. And there were two conditions, two special conditions, that were of particular importance to us. And one was not too easy to quantify, but it was that a walkable beach may be maintained. The proponents never monitored the walkable beach. We brought that up before the CONCOM. We don't know how long a walkable beach was maintained or not maintained. I mean, we have anecdotal photographic evidence when the beach was not walkable, but we have no data. And the proponents have brought in reams of data, but they're silent on the, on the amount of time that that beach has been walkable. The second important special condition in both the DEP superseding order and the local order was that SBPF and the town report to the Conservation Commission every six months on the progress made towards securing alternative access and relocating the utilities infrastructure. Not once in three years has such a report ever been made. The order of conditions is still in effect. I think, we think, a case could be made that the proponents are not in compliance with the order of conditions right now. That's a very serious thing. Maybe what we have to do is we have to ask the Conservation Commission to open a public hearing to hear about that. We thank you for your transparency. We're glad you brought that, brought this forward for discussion. It's been silent for three months. We don't know what you've been dealing with. We don't know what information's been provided to you. This is our only chance to continue the dialogue, and the thought that you would, you know, put this on the agenda and then make a motion and have a vote is quite frankly disconcerting and doesn't seem consistent to us with your concept of transparency. We don't know what you're being advised. And if, since we don't know what you're being advised, we don't know how we can provide information that would be helpful to you. What we do know is that the planning for the Coastal Resiliency Comprehensive Action Plan has started. And these very questions, a risk, excuse me, excuse me?
I'm just--
Mr. Chairman, I have the floor, don't I?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm just, it's just disconcerting to see someone standing at the other microphone. Thank you. What we're doing, and those who have attended the Coastal Resiliency workshops know, is this is exactly what, what the public is being asked to discuss. Risk, vulnerability, assessment, prioritizing. By your going ahead and allowing this to happen, and please, once, I mean, we've learned from past practice, once this permitting process stops, it will be, starts, it will be very difficult or impossible to stop. There is a middle way, as we explained in April, and the timing couldn't be more perfect. This, this 900 feet of geotubes was permitted as a temporary structure for six years. A three-year permit with the option to renew for three years. The current permit expires in September. The proponents can come in and have it renewed for another three years. That would give us time, it would give them time to become in compliance with the current order, and it would give the community a chance to go through the coastal resiliency planning process. It would give us a chance to have more data. And to answer your question, Matt, which you always ask, is are the geotubes working? CONCOM hasn't responded to that.
So I'm hoping they will when we send it, but--
Well, you're opening a whole nother thing. They'll be evaluating, you know, the proposal for 4,000 feet. They won't be saying, are the geotubes working or not? But they've been silent on that. And three more years of data would be, would be very helpful. So it seems to us that that's a way forward that still leaves a lot of open, a lot of options. There's no rush. There is absolutely no rush. We've got a renewable permit for six years, and that, we could move forward with that, we could tie up all of these loose ends, we could get the coastal resiliency plan, and we can come together as a community and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know you want to--
Hold on one second, I do want to, I'm going to see, do we want to take a vote, or do we have any discussions, or, that was some new, newer thoughts from Deanna. I don't want to keep going on and recycling conversations, or you rebutting right back and forth. Are we ready for a vote, or we wouldn't--
I'm ready.
I'd like to hear what Steve has to say.
Okay. Very quickly, the assertions that SBPF is not in compliance with the Conservation Commission permit are blatantly untrue, have been raised on numerous occasions and have been rebutted on numerous occasions, and I will not go into the details now, but I want to go on record that the walkable beach criteria has been maintained and documented, and that the reports have been filed consistent with the, with the requirement. And the suggestion that these are non-compliances is really an unfortunate misinformation campaign. And I hope that going forward, we can all work to stop doing that. The rancor is really, really disappointing, and it's that kind of thing that causes it, I think. And also the suggestion that there's no rush, I would say that, go look at all the empty lots on Baxter Road and ask those people to loss their homes if we think, if they think we're ahead of the curve, because that number is going to double and triple and quadruple as it goes down, and those people don't think that there's no rush. Thank you.
Any other comments? If there's no more comments, we'll take the vote.
I just want to say that, can I say one more? That maintaining town beaches is important to me, and, and taking things to town meeting is important to me. I don't think that if we do vote to grant this NOI, we're not seeing the importance of either of those things. I would disagree with that, but I think that is exactly what we're doing.
But I would ask how? When, when, when loss of beach, loss of a walkable beach is a failure criteria?
And to clarify, I think when we don't take the appropriate time and consideration necessary to look at the beach as a system, we are, we are minimizing the importance of the beach. It is a complete functioning system, and you have to look at it that way. And so when we don't do that, we're minimizing the importance of the beach and the public access to the beach. And again, I just, I do think that there's an element of this that feels like it is trying to get around town meeting. And I think we are minimizing the importance of having the community understand the options as well as have the opportunity to voice their opinion.
Letting the CONCOM review does not necessarily take away some future vote of town meeting in terms of the land. I'm interested to see what CONCOM has to say. They have been very silent. They're the experts on the environmental part of it.
If anybody has anything new to add that has not been spoken about? Thank you, National Grid, for sitting through this.
Hello, I'm Bert Balkin, I live at 47 Appleton. Jim mentioned that town administration recommended the board sign the NOI based upon protection of Baxter Road, is that correct?
I'd like to defer to town manager.
Yes. That was correct. And so has the town administration provided you, the board, with any information, a data analysis, analysis saying what needs protection on Baxter Road?
It's a preventative measure in the area that is vulnerable to erosion.
So basically, what we're supposed to be doing with the coastal resiliency plan is assessing properties, areas of island that are vulnerable, and making decisions on priorities in there, what we need to do with them. So I would just add that I think that we need to look island-wide, I think it's been said before, so that part has been said before. I was just curious about what analysis you guys were provided, and it doesn't sound like, it sounds like it was just a need that was expressed, it's not, there's no any hard data on that. Is that correct?
There's not any hard data.
Well, there were estimates, there were estimates on, there was estimates on sewer costs and replacement, there were estimates on water costs and replacements, there was, there's been a fair amount done. I don't know if it's all compiled in one location, but I, but there has been a lot. We've been working on this for three years.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
And have you guys been doing the same thing with Matikit and Cisco and the sewer beds, that kind of analysis? Just, I'm just curious. Have you guys been provided that kind of information to the board?
As in regards to, or--
On what you said, like sewer, power?
Yeah, Libby.
We have looked quite a bit at Matikit, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I just wanted to, because when that was brought up by Jim, I just wanted to make, understand what information that was provided. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is it time to follow the vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. And I just wanted to be clear, that is with the September 30th. Just to go over your motion, Jim. The date, the date certain, September 30th for the plans?
Yes, that's, that's included in my motion.
I just want to say, I do feel we somewhat misrepresented the intention of this agenda item.
I don't, I don't think so. I don't. I even said two-minute drill, I said, we might, we might vote to table it, we might vote for this at the beginning. You just mean as the agenda item worded?
Yeah, I'll have to think about it again.
Or executive session.
I think it's the, the way we left executive session, I voted against it there, so I suppose it doesn't really matter what I think about that, because I voted no anyways, but I do. The intention that we left.
Well, we voted, the most, the decision in executive session was whether to bring this, this request to take it to the, allow them to move forward, should we bring that to a vote? And it was a split decision, some of us felt that that obligation for the backup plans needed to be completed. Some of us felt that that obligation for the backup plans needed to be completed, but the majority ruled no, they wanted to bring it to a vote. So we, it was, it was clear that we were bringing this for a vote on whether to allow them to move forward. I thought it was-
I thought it was to bring it for a vote to decide whether we wanted to take a vote.
Exactly, yeah. That was my understanding, and it was more-
To have another discussion.
A vote to bring it to public session as opposed to-
Okay, well, that was, oh.
I mean, I wasn't clear that we were definitely taking a vote tonight.
Well, then, if you didn't think we should have, we should have voted against.
I didn't say we shouldn't have, just saying I wasn't clear that we were going to go that route.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, the way, the outcome is different from the intention. My understanding of what we voted on in executive session was, the intention was different than what actually happened here. And what we voted on in executive session was a different intention.
I thought it was-
Was to bring it back to the public.
But that was one of the options. We could have voted not to do it, or we could have voted to table it, we could have, we're bringing it to open session to give an update and then possibly take a vote. That was my understanding.
I think that's how, I think that's how you prefaced it when we opened it tonight.
Yeah.
So I think you prefaced it that way.
You laid out the options. In fact, you laid out more options than I'd even thought of, like tabling it and things like that.
And I really wasn't set on taking a vote, I think we vote, we must have, see how we felt, listen to the public, have a discussion in open session. Can we take a two-minute break? Sorry.
Sure. For the record, I asked to have Jim earlier, because I knew this was happening.
Just wanted to say thank you. I know you guys have worked really, really hard in the past eight months. Thank you.
This thing is never going to go away. It really isn't.
It's very hard.
Yeah, it is.
That's not what this agenda item says.
That's what we get the big ones.
This agenda item says, I didn't say that to discuss whether to vote.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, in and of itself-
So maybe when we vote with the agenda, that needs to be, that wasn't, obviously, this board had a difference of opinion about the agenda.
I think I said yes.
If we're not clear, then we should go with the agenda.
And I think that was-
If there was a big reason to change it, I would change it. But I haven't seen a big reason to change it.
I guess it's one of those where, to me, it was-
That's why I finally kind of simplified it in my head.
What we had voted on there, and what we are taking into consideration.
Well, it wasn't like this, it was, it was very clear to me after the executive session, but you and I left with different. Because I thought it was, well, we're going to discuss whatever we do.
Well, what I think was interesting, and I think this is what I think-
We probably shouldn't be talking about this.
Sorry, I have to stand up, I can't.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing to consider utility petition for National Grid, National Grid for Plan 25535. This is at, sorry, Gray Ave. Gray Ave to Seven Parker Lane. Thank you again for-
This is a GOMX, National Grid. Yeah, we're looking to have some conduit, install three, install the cost across our Free Street, feed a house number seven, Parker Lane.
Any questions from the board? Any issues there?
It's a public hearing, is there anyone?
Oh, thank you. Public hearing, anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second?
With the comments.
With comments. Motion to approve with comments.
With, thank you. Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Open another public hearing, consider utility petition from National Grid, this is off the Monomoy Road.
Yeah, same thing pretty much, install some conduit across Street in case of concrete defeat, number 65, Monomoy Road.
Okay, does anyone here from the public speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve with comments noted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four oh. Thank you, sir. Town managers report.
Thank you. The first item is preliminary review of potential fiscal 2020 additional unupdated general fund capital projects. So you will recall that a month and a half ago or so, the board had a three-way meeting with the Capital Program Committee and the Finance Committee, and we discussed the process for 2020, and we did discuss, these projects more or less were noted at that time. And what we've been doing for the last few years, prior to the real commencement of the capital project request process, is coming to the board and making sure that we are on the right track with the types of projects to put forward. So for example, last year, we had a number of infrastructure projects that are put forward. This year, we have the same, as well as some specifics out of the strategic plan. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. If you have anything else out there that you don't see on here or in the out-years, then it would be good to know that now. I don't know, I, you've seen it, it's in your packet, I'm not going to go over every single item, but they are, for the most part, infrastructure improvements, and then, as I mentioned, a couple of things from the strategic plan. On the right track, more or less.
Questions or comments? Anything stand out?
I thought the, I thought the amount being spent on sewer was pretty significant, and I just, I would like to get an idea of what sort of growth was factored into that, when we're doing that amount of work. What sort of growth have we factored into that, has David factored into that?
Okay, sure. As we get closer to the out-years and fiscal 20, I'm not sure he had a whole lot new for 2020 yet. So just to remind you then a little bit about the process, we have some scheduled meetings with the departments. The capital project request forms were due about a week ago or so, and we're going to be having some specific town admin meetings with the departments to go over them in detail. And then eventually, the September, October, November-ish, the Capital Program Committee will start meeting with the departments to review their projects. Sometimes you will get updates about that. And in December or so, there's another three-way meeting scheduled with those three groups, Capcom, FinCom, Board, to go over the Capcom's recommendations, and one of you is on that committee.
Something else we could read, if there were something specific like that you're interested in, once we go through that review of Capcom, usually in committee reports, this happened, this happened, that's something that we could, that can just keep us updated.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's why I mentioned it now, and it can be something, you know, to get from David down the line.
On page five, this in-town bike path phase three had a dollar, had one in there. I'm assuming that's either a typo or a placeholder?
That's a placeholder.
Okay, because I, I think, I think the in-town bike paths, you know, as we've discussed, I think the sidewalks and the bike paths, you know, I think alternatives are key to these summer months, is to getting people out of their cars in the summer months, and I want to make sure that those go to a top priority.
It's something that's on my radar for this capital program, is can we put money in to, whatever it is, move those utility poles, start that process.
Yeah, we should start, we should be knocking off, picking up, that should go to a higher priority, I think, to make sure we get done.
I don't know if you looked at this spreadsheet that, that was earlier.
Very top?
Yeah, it's in the first year as a dollar. I just, I'm just reiterating it for the camera.
It's just, it's only a dollar because we don't have a number yet.
Yeah.
And in the longer sheet, the planet sheets, we call them, you can't put, you have to put a number in for the total up. So, right, so just quickly here, maybe I just do this anyway. The intermodal transportation facility, as you can see, that has a lot of question marks around it, we're, I don't think we're close to that for fiscal 2020 at this point. Improvements to the 2FG parking lot and the town pier parking lot, we're thinking about a million dollars for improvements to both of those. That's a preliminary estimate. The town pier supplemental repair funding that we talked about tonight, that million-dollar number is also a preliminary number. I'm not sure if that's where we're going to end up with that. The Pulpus Harbor dredging supplemental, that was that grant we talked about earlier. But we will probably need a number in for 2020. Feasibility space scenes preliminary design for seasonal employee housing, that's a direct outcome of the strategic plan. I put a strike through that item, town admin, select board feasibility space scenes for senior slash community center, because we've just put that group together, they haven't even met yet, and I don't think they're going to be ready with a number for 2020. The next item, the completion of the in-town bike path, that's direct out of the strategic plan. Construction of Newtown sidewalk, that's a kind of a question mark, because that might get worked into the in-town bike path, and when we say in-town bike path, I think we mean not, not bike path, but maybe multi-use path, and it may be on Newtown Road.
Yeah, that goes, I think that goes right along with our strategic plan.
Yes, absolutely. So I actually probably just combined those two. The construction of the intersection improvements, times three, it's actually, I think, times two. Old South and Fairgrounds roundabout would be part of the Old South Road corridor improvements. And then the other two, Four Corners and Bartlett Surfside. And then projects in connection with the coastal resiliency plan, and those are things we're looking at now.
Is the, so shore road improvements, sort of a placeholder in regard to needing to do things in relation to surfside crossing?
I think that was actually in there before surfside crossing came along.
Okay.
It, I think it's been in-
It says no. Under the sewer.
That is, we haven't met with the departments yet, and so I-
Okay, no, no.
I think, I don't-
You can go back to Mia.
Yeah, thank you.
And the, my only other question is on, for the two fairgrounds in fiscal year 21, there's 30 million, what is the thought on that now? Is that moving the, all the offices there, or what's the-
Well, the last discussion that the board had, and it wasn't even all of you, was to move the municipal offices to two fairgrounds. So this is just moving it out. I'm sure we're going to revisit it again before-
I'm bringing it up because, for that reason.
But it's to keep, it's just to keep it somewhat alive, what, something in there. I know.
So even though the board wants it dead, we keep, it keeps, you know, it's like that whack-a-mole, you know?
Well, the thing about it is that we're going to be spending a lot of money on some of our falling apart buildings, because we don't know what else to do. Like, the two fairgrounds building needs a lot of work.
We started talking a little bit, chair and vice chair and town manager, about, just about trying to come up with some master plan, very preliminarily, for all of the offices, all of the offices and major town buildings.
Because that's sort of what the title of it would be, master plan.
It says fire department.
I think there are so many-
So many pieces.
There's so much concern on the part of the community about some of these capital projects we're doing, and for us to say we're going to build a big office building, whether it's needed, whether it's financially prudent, all those reasons, so I would think, I would ask the chair and vice chair to be very cautious as you think about bringing something like that forward to this board. I can't imagine what it's going to be like when the fire station's built, and people are going to be driving by that and are going to be making comments about it. So I, I'm, so that's just-
I don't think anything is going to be coming to the board any time in the next-
Not to be spending time thinking about it.
Yeah, we actually did talk about that, this isn't part of the strategic plan. This is stuff that we can put time into.
Right, yeah, that was our role, so.
But we touched on it a little.
No, we didn't.
No, not in the strategic plan, I'm just saying we talked about it.
I think, I think the need for it to be consolidated somewhere, my guess is it's going to come out of the assessments that are being done now of staffing and, you know, and then the plus assessment. I think, you know, if they're doing their job, they're going to come out and say that all of these should be consolidated somewhere. And then the question is going to be for us to figure out is where? You know, I think that's going to be my guess, but-
What town manager said, please do a strategic plan, which gives me some guidelines for what I'm going to be spending my time on for the next three years. That wasn't on it. So why are we spending time on it?
We're not.
Well, why are we talking about it?
Because I brought it up, sorry.
No, 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 you said, no, no, you said you touched, you touched on the fact we're going to do a master plan for the, or considering doing a master plan for offices.
No, we just started talking about what the future plans were, not in any big way.
No, I understand, I just, so, I think we have to be self-disappointed as we-
Things that are falling apart.
I understand, yeah.
Speaking of spending time on things, I can move on to the next item, if you guys agree with that. Do you have any other questions about capital? Monthly town management activities report, I'll try to get through this very quickly. There is a lot of time being spent on things that are not the strategic plan, like surfside crossing 40B. We finished our comment letter, you all did, to the zoning board of appeals. We are working on the other independent studies that the board wants, specifically the water quality consulting. We are still looking for someone who can do that. I've got several people looking at it. We have the traffic contract in place, and I understand that the zoning board is now asking, I haven't seen it in writing yet, but I understand it's coming, is now asking for an independent review of the endangered species survey that is required anyway by law, and gets reviewed anyway by natural heritage agency with the state. So you might want to think about whether or not that's, how critical that is. Marijuana dispensaries, lots of time spent on that, as we heard tonight. We've been working on the Green Lady Host Community Agreement, the checklist for ACT Natural, one of the other pending groups coming in. There are two other groups that are getting through that checklist. Once the host community agreements, and I understand that at least initially, potentially we're ending up with only two, there are a number of annual follow-up items that have to be done in terms of the cost monitoring protocol in accordance with state regulatory requirements, and we need to work out internally how the licenses are going to be monitored. There's going to be regulations that we're going to have to adopt and so forth. Harbor Place, we are still moving along a bit with this. Your negotiating group has met recently, last week I think it was, with the Harbor Place group, and you're going to get updated about that sometime soon in executive session. The Transportation Center Study Work Group has not actually dissolved yet, because we haven't totally reconciled a recommendation out of that group with, for the intermodal transportation center, because we are discussing some issues about that with the negotiating group. Coastal Resiliency Plan, we had another public forum last week. It was pretty well-attended, not quite as well-attended as the first one, but pretty good nonetheless. We received our municipal vulnerability program grant, and we're going to be working through that process. And we're having internal discussions about the integration of the dredge plan and hazard mitigation plan with the coastal resiliency plan, and that's all, you know, kind of one big project. Strategic planning, we've got a kind of a status meeting coming up in August. The Island Home, what will it take to develop something at the current site? We discussed that tonight. Parking demand management options, we have a group that's been meeting with the consultant that Remain provided us as to what specific paid parking system we would go with, and we had some discussion yesterday about different systems, and they're doing a little more research on that. We want to make sure we have something that can work for us that, and very clearly understand what sorts of personnel and other resources are required to implement it and run it. Real estate matters, we have a number of real estate matters going on, but most specifically tonight, we're, as you can see, we're progressing along with the grand swap with the land bank. We have some different kinds of road matters. You're probably going to be getting a petition sometime in the near future from Tasha Millane residents for private road repairs on that road. Staffing study's underway, the senior center, you established that group, and we're in the process of getting the members appointed by their respective groups. The special town meeting, of course, is taking a lot of time. Personnel vacancies in the sort of higher level way. We have the budget analyst position that is going to be vacant shortly, and the incumbent there will probably do some remote work for a period of time, however, we are advertising for that. work for a, a period of time, however, we are advertising for that. Uh, same with labor relations director, that's been vacant for a few months now, and we are having some difficulty filling that, and that is a cr, critical position. And then the fiscal 2020 capital projects, which we just went over.
Can I ask one, one question that maybe we could put on a future agenda? It just, it, it keeps coming up in my world, um, is discuss, um, some discussion about the, um, short-term rental tax, and what we might, what it's going to look like in its final version, which I think they're trying to reconcile between the House and the Senate now, and what we might bring forth to town meeting next year. So, no comments, I just wanted to put that out there, that maybe we could discuss that.
I think we're going to need to discuss that once we have a final legislation that's been enacted. Yeah, that's definitely on the radar.
Is that coming up soon, is that this fall?
I think they're trying to reconcile it by July thirty-first. Is that, do you know, John?
Well, that's one of the sessions.
Uh, one last thing on our town manager's report, we had a pond forum on Monday, and I think, I saw some of you there, thank you for attending, there were a lot of people at that, I would say close to eighty, maybe, sort of-ish. Anyway, um, we had a charrette-like exercise at one point, where people put stickers on different things for different ponds, and, um, the general outcome, we, it hasn't been all tallied up yet, but it was quite clear that Maya Comic Pond was the most discussed pond, and I would say the majority of the people at the forum were advocating for some kind of regular opening protocol, so we'll, we're going to sort of reconvene with our staff group and bring something to you, add something.
I thought staff did an amazing job, much better than I would do, of, um, staying out of the, uh, the holes that were dug for them to step into, um, and, and just really sticking to the science. And, uh, so I really applaud them for that.
I thought they addressed it enough, I agree, Jim. I thought the presentation was really good, it was nice visuals, with somebody who's not an expert in that field, could understand how it works. I mean, I, I walked away more knowledgeable about water quality, and I thought we talked about it all the time, so I really appreciate the visuals, it was something. Okay, any comments? The board, any reports?
Uh, we had our third strategic planning meeting for the Affordable Housing Trust, and we're starting to get into sort of the meat of the issues. Um, and what was interesting, um, was how some of the results of the surveys that went out, I think, so all of us probably got it. And one of the things that really struck Judy was that, um, we are far and away have the highest insta, I, I don't think we're surprised, but the employees with the highest instability of housing. She said no other town she's worked with has had employers say, um, such a high percentage of their employees don't have stable housing. And, and also, one of the results that I think was important was that, on the leadership side of things, uh, there was a resounding, um, call for more interaction between boards and the Affordable Housing Trust, and I think that's something that, um, you know, we'll be looking for comments on, feedback on how we can do that better, even, you know, adding on to any sort of presentation I would make, or a future Affordable Housing Trust representative makes, how can we increase that, that engagement? And, you know, again, we were sort of identifying the biggest issues, looking at the mission statement, and moving on, um, from there, with, we've got two more sessions. Another item from just the regular part of the meeting was that, uh, we had a private citizen come to us with a proposed model for a, working with a developer, and had started to run some numbers, and had a real intention to look at a, create a model that could be fit to one acre, or thirteen acres, or whatever, so it was great to see, it was, it was definitely civil interest, civil driven, so, it's good.
Just, um, I'm not on the committee, but, uh, yesterday, the ZBA held a public hearing for, uh, surfside crossing, and, um, to say it was a standard room only, it was, this room was filled, people were sitting on the, sitting on the floor, the outside room was filled, people were leaving, so, and, and, um, Jared did a really nice job, they decided to continue the meeting, they're going to, to August ninth, they're going to have their regular meeting here from one to four, and then adjourn and go to the, um, the auditorium at the high school at five. And to Libby's point about, and I've thought at, some about it, about these independent, um, reviews, and, you know, we talked about this last time, and I made the suggestion on the water quality, and, and, and again, I, I did hear when they were talking about endangered species, and, to be, I'm just using my words carefully, but what, you know, when, when you want, when you're looking for a certain outcome, um, there are ways to structure a review, uh, that makes it more likely you will get the outcome you're looking for. And that's certainly true when you're engaging consultants to do that, and certainly in the area of transportation. I'm not sure about water quality, because I don't have that experience, but also endangered species, so, um, um, a peer review of a consultant's report for endangered species is different than doing an independent review. And I think we, um, and there was some, and you could tell by some of the testimony yesterday, that, um, you know, the, the consultants for the developers said, well, you know, this, we really don't have, and, you know, I'm not sure the technical term, you know, unique plantings in this area, because it's, you know, this kind of growth and everything, but, um, you're really kind of trying to create a context, uh, but if there was an independent review paid for by the town, um, I think we, you know, I, I would have a greater assurance that it was, it was independent. So, I would encourage us to consider those. That's it for me.
So after the ZBA meeting, you felt even more strongly that?
I did, yeah, just because I've had experience in my other life of, of doing those, going through those review processes.
It was also amazing to have an entire room of people discuss a moth for forty-five minutes, I thought that was.
You were loving it.
That was great.
Any other, oh, Erica?
I just wanted to note that, um, the, the, um, August ninth meeting is actually not when the public hearing is going to be rescheduled for, there's been some scheduling snafus.
Oh, no.
Um, so that is to be determined.
Oh, shoot, okay.
It's probably have to be.
Thank you, we're given, so that must have happened after, yeah, okay.
I said, I had one, one, it's more of an update, um, after the bike fatality on Pulpus Bike Path, um, I have been in, just as the chairman of BPAC, I've taken a pond, not really as a select board, my slipboard hat, um, I've been working with Mass Bike, I've been working with Juliana Dillon, talking about where this Omni bike bill is, what, what will it do, how will it help bike safety, um, I've been working with DPW, they've been very receptive, Director Rob McNeil, we've had landscaping companies come out and say, how can we help, tell us what to do, um, people from Lucinda Young, I've asked to help from a more of agricultural landscaping, um, side of things, I've had staff meet us at eight-thirty in the morning on a Sunday, and so, I didn't bring it up last, last week, because it was a little too new for me, I was probably a little too emotional about it, but there's a lot of things going on, it just visually, if you look at the corner of Barlet Farm Road and Hummock Pond, you're turning to go to, to the brewery of our Barlet Farm, uh, Land Bank has cut that area there to make the, the sight, line sight much better, so Land Bank has stepped up on some certain areas. If you notice right out here, we cut down that, that big pine tree, because you couldn't see bikers coming in, and so there's, you have about, I think, twenty-five hotspots that we're going to try to work at, whatever, whatever DPW can do in the short term, and then the BPAC's going to hold some meetings and try to facilitate long-term solutions for bike path safety. So from legislative levels to try and have a, try and have a system, so things we do in the winter, maybe looking at approach regulations, but we didn't want to jump right into it, right, right off the bat, but what can we do right now for bike path safety? So there's a lot of stuff going on, kind of internally with the departments, and with the public, and with the nonprofits, so I just wanted to say, I'm really proud of everybody coming together.
And Tom, and, and it's pretty appro, it's pretty appropriate to talk on tonight, because Tom started the meeting with that tonight, and we're, from a different, yeah, from, in, from a different perspective, but all things that were, you know, I'm on the committee now, all things that were discussed there, and this has been a topic for fifteen to twenty years. And, uh, it was interesting, uh, one member brought pictures from Colorado, and they do their bike paths completely different, where the bikers have priority in any, uh, any crossing of that traveled way has the stop sign. And I think that's what I've been sort of arguing for, and I've been told it's not legal, et cetera, but I think there's, we have to start thinking that way, because we have to change the mindset, it's not, you know, and, and the reason those guys don't try, the fast guys don't ride on the bike path, it's too dangerous. If they're riding the bike path, they'll get killed, you know, not, not, and I'm not doing that flipping light, but they, they, you know, they were, they're going way too fast to be on the bike path, and so that, so it's, there's a lot of things, and what I, and I don't know if there is such a thing, I've talked to Jason about it, but is there such a thing as a bike-first community? You know, three or four months a year, all year round, we should be bike-first, but three or four months a year, we need to be, biking and walking needs to be the priority. Biking, walking, transportation, you know, we can't keep adding people and cars and think it's going to get safer. So I just think that that's, it's, it's great that we're really starting to work on it.
Yeah, I mean, if one of our, one thing in our strategic plan is to lower the use of automobile, right, by six percent, one of the things we're going to be asking people to do is to ride fast, so we need to make bike paths safer. We've been pretty good, but, um, you know, Lucinda had a really good point, this is way before my time on Nantucket, it said, we were standing there at, um, Barnier Farm, kind of looking at, all of a sudden, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixties, there was, none of this shrubbery was here, it was pretty much flat, you could see from here, all the rock, but it's just slowly, slowly grown up, and when Pulpus Bike Path was put in, it was a, really a bike path, small, six, eight feet, and things have changed, and so, there's also discussion, how do we make that a twelve-foot bike path, like Hummock Pond Road? Are there's infrastructure things we need to do to change with, kind of what we're asking people to do, right?
And we were so happy to get that in, because for fifteen years, we were trying to get the Pulpus Bike Path then. So it's great, I mean, I, you know, it's great, it's good to be thinking about how we can improve it, so.
There's a lot of driveways that cross.
Yes, yes.
A lot, and it's very vegetated.
Yes.
It's just scary, and, but I know there's a bunch of other bike-related accidents that have happened over the past couple of weeks.
And I tell you that my child, seven children, since I've visualized it in nineteen forty-six and forty-seven, it had, it's, for nineteen forty-seven, a very large, a very large bike path, do not go along the road, or anywhere near it, they, uh, they, they've utilized what in Britain would be, look like rights-of-way pathways, that go through fields, uh, because somebody was not playing on it.
All the old trail, all, all the old rail lines is in mass, they use those.
Perhaps we can do the same thing here, to a small extent.
We're, we're looking at it.
Little German?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.